Good afternoon, everyone. We will pick up the rest of the city council meeting, but I announce that the date is August 28, 2025, and the time is 6:04 PM. No voter action was taken in the executive session, there being no further business there. We will return to our regular agenda. Okay. Regular agenda begins with our pledge of allegiance, invocation, and considering absence requests, which we don't have any of today. So we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. If you'll remain standing after that for the invocation presented by Chaplain Mike Armstrong of the College Station Fire Department, then we'll move on with the agenda. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God.
Pledge of allegiance to me. Father, we give you thanks tonight for your care and love for us, and I thank you for all of our officials and citizens gathered here. We pray that tonight, as the mayor and the city council deliberate and plan for College Station, that you would give them great wisdom as they look to contribute to the flourishing of our city and its citizens. Thank you again for all of our employees, our law enforcement, fire and emergency responders. We pray especially for teachers and administrators who are in to our school year, Parks and Rec, as they are beginning their activities, and all support services. We pray, Father, for the welfare of our city and ask that you would bless the work of the council tonight, that they may be a blessing to our city, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain Armstrong. We appreciate your participation in the meeting and providing us with that invocation. All of you that have seen the agenda or picked one up outside, we have a speaker protocol. I ask those who have signed to speak to honor the concepts in that, and remember, you're limited to three minutes, and there is a timer up there that you can measure your timing with. But first, before we have here visitors or anything else, we are going to have a proclamation. So I'm going to come down there, but I'm inviting Lindsey Boline and members of the Childhood Cancer Awareness Foundation to come up front with me, and we'll read the proclamation from the occasion down there. I'm pleased to have a great turnout, not only the board members, but the sponsors as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. This is for the city. I know you probably can't fly it, but I was hoping maybe we could.
Okay, yeah, we'll take a photo after, but hang on to that for the moment, and let me come up here. Ultimately, you're going to have to pull in because that, wherever our photographer is. He's going to need a wide-angle camera, but we'll get to that in a minute. So Lindsey and members of the organization and families that are with them, I welcome you all here. This is actually a proclamation, not only is it from the three entities, the two cities and the county, but it'll be read again at an event coming up that I'm supposed to be at later this, later in early September, right? So we're going to do this again at your event. But we have an audience here, so let me present this proclamation. "From the office of the mayors and the county judge, whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among children in the United States with thousands diagnosed each year, and whereas September is recognized nationally as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, to honor the lives lost, celebrate the courageous young fighters battling the disease, and support the survivors and their families. And whereas our local community is committed to increasing awareness, supporting research, encouraging community action to improve the lives of children and families affected by pediatric cancers. And whereas our local community is proud to participate in the regional awareness initiative, quote, color Brazos Valley gold," and you'll hear about that again in a minute, "uniting communities across Brazos Valley to shine a light on childhood cancer throughout September. And now, therefore, we, Judge Casell, County Brazos County, Mayor Bobby Gutierrez, Mayor of the City, Brian, and I, John P. Nichols, Mayor of the City College Station, and acting on behalf of our respective councils and commissioners' court, do hereby proclaim September 25 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and declare September 15, 2025, as Spirit Day for Color Brazos Valley Gold. And encourage residents, businesses, schools, and organizations to participate in the campaign to raise awareness by wearing gold and supporting affected families with the purpose of working together towards a future without childhood cancer. Signed by Judge Casell, Mayor Gutierrez, and myself." We present this proclamation to Ms. Boline and the members of this organization. So we will now do an official presentation, and we've got a photographer over here, but let me get this open. So, can you double up here a little bit from this end?
Yeah.
Want to move over this way?
Okay.
Okay, we can move over this way. Let me get on this side of you then, and you can take this. Are we good?
Take one with the flag.
No, please. We want another photo here, but, yeah. Oh, you got a special flag?
This is for the city of College Station and do whatever regulations they'll have.
Well, let's get it right side up.
Is that reading the right way?
There we go. What is the date of the event?
September 15 at Aggie Park at the Moore Family Creamery.
And everyone's invited.
The community and the student body, everyone is invited.
And did you hear her say it's right next to the creamery over there, so?
We will be serving some free ice cream.
Free ice cream, even better. Thank you. I'll be there for the next presentation and reading, along with the judge and the other mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Appreciate it. This is for you.
So, well, actually, it takes care of item five, I'm sorry, 5.1. So we now move to here visitors, and I have no one signed up for that. So we will move on to the consent agenda, which is item seven, and I believe there's eight, eight items there. Council members can ask for, if you have any questions that weren't already answered that you have on any of these items, you can indicate by number which one you want to have discussed.
Five and eight, Mayor. Briefly, five and eight.
7.5 and 7.8. Any others? Didn't see any, so Ms. Kane, are you available? It's item 7.5, is a presentation discussion, possible action. Construction manager at risk, CMAR, contract with Raba Construction LLC. For the public works facility project funds in the amount of $5 million have been approved for the project. Ms. Kane, Mr. Yancey.
Good evening.
Ms. Kane, thank you very much for what you do for this city. Potential sites for final location of this project, we have not made a final determination where this is going?
No, we have not. We've been investigating the current site and then the Bevisma site, as we have discussed before. We're expecting some of the final report information on those with Geotech and some other environmental we did in the next couple of weeks.
I'm struck by how lightning-fast we've moved on this. The original contract that we had after budgetary approval was $386,000. I thought that was pre-construction work and site evaluation. Did I have that wrong?
So it is, but that's with Marmon Mock, who's our design team, and so they're working and they're doing some of the initial investigation, Geotech and the environmental, those types of things, and doing programming and figuring out site layouts, those types of things, and then bringing the construction manager on board through the construction manager at risk process, which, as you know, we're doing on several projects right now. They're going to come in and help validate estimates, help also look at the geotechnical information, evaluate site conditions along with the design team, so it's a partnership all the way through. And we also have the opportunity with having them on board, they look at constructability and help look for cost-saving opportunities and just lessons learned that they've had on similar-type facilities, and then they could ultimately be the ones to build the project as we move forward. And then they would do all the different pricing that would come to council.
And these guys, Raba out of Houston, they could be, they could be the CMAR all the way through the project?
Yes.
If y'all, if y'all are made happy with this first 150 grand with the services?
Yes, that is the intention, yes.
Has this one been treated a little differently than other large capital projects, or is this, in your mind, usual and customary?
No, this is, we proceeded the same way with this one as we have with our other construction manager at risk projects.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Did you say, did you say 150,000 or 145?
I was rounding, Mayor.
You're just rounding it. Okay, I thought it was 145,000 for this phase.
For the pre-construction services, yes.
But they're working with the architect firm that we've already brought in to do program requirements and some of the testing and other things that you're doing.
Yes, they would be.
Possible locations.
Yeah, so they'll help review everything that we have from the architect, and then the next phase, there will be more design phases with Marmon Mock, so that will come back to y'all as well, but this 145,000 will carry us through all of the design phase services should we, as we continue on.
Okay, thank you very much. Item 7.8, Mr. Smith. This is presentation discussion, possible action regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 36 Traffic and Vehicles, Article 6 Traffic Schedule, Section 38.38-1005 Traffic Schedule, Romanum 5 School Zones by amending school operational times and adding additional locations. Mr. Yancey, I've got a question on this, but I'll let you go first.
Mr. Smith, thanks for your service to the city. I've learned in my time on council that these traffic updates, they usually happen with really good reason, and they often seem ministerial to me, but then there's, on the backside, people, you know, for lack of a better phrase, you know, freak out, or they're taken aback by the change that we made. I called this item off of consent simply to give you an opportunity, hopefully briefly to summarize what's about to happen here so that, were this to pass, which it probably will, what is it going to mean for the school zones?
Yes, absolutely. So the schools were moved, I believe, three or four days from their schedule, which in turn, they added 10 minutes on to every day throughout the entire year. Once school started, we received a request to add 10 minutes on to the school zone because there were reports that parents were still in line while the flashers were turning off, while the school zone turned off. All of our flashers are set up on a timer, and so they automatically would turn off, and the only way to extend those school zones would be to amend the ordinance. And so we took this opportunity to do an evaluation of the whole entire city, and with College Station ISD, all of the elementary schools were getting out at the same time, and all the secondary schools, middle schools and up were getting out at the same time. So we were able to do a blanket approach to all of these school zones, with the exception of the ones where they overlap. There's two or three school zones where you can see that they have an extended time. And then the other exception to that would be College Station, excuse me, A&amp;M Consolidated High School. We have had a history of keeping the school zone on, on the city streets throughout the entire day since they have a split campus where a lot of students go back and forth throughout the day. So that's, that school zone will be running all day. Originally, the school zones were running for approximately 45 minutes. We've extended that by a little bit, and now they are starting a little bit later, and they're running for a solid hour. We're realizing as the schools grow, it's also taking a little bit longer to clear out the pickup lines and the queue lines. So those are the changes that we've made.
Perfect. That's all I had. Just want to give you that opportunity. Thank you.
Let me add my question to this. This was something the school decided to do, but the city's responsible for the work involved, correct?
That's correct.
And probably was not calculated into their decision. Do you have or could you produce a cost associated with this? I imagine each one of these got to be reset individually. It's not, they're not connected by fiber in our traffic network, I assume? Or can you just reprogram it centrally and take care of all of them?
Interesting enough, changing the flasher times is probably the easiest thing out of everything. They all have SIM cards in them, so we can do it remotely. At the beginning of the year, our traffic systems manager, he sets all that up, and so it's already set for the entire year, including the days that they're out. And so that's the easy part. The hard part is we have 38 static signs where the flashers may not be at, where it could be inside of, on a city street, inside the school zone area. So there's a static time listed on that sign. And so the manpower and hours dedicated, our team tomorrow will start removing those signs, we print new labels, we put, we go and get them back together, we go put them back out. We do have a cost associated with it. We estimate that is $380 on material, and for equipment and labor, it's $1,100 for a total of $1,480.
That's for the entire 38 signs?
That's for the entire 38 signs.
Okay, and you're producing the signs in your shop?
Yes, sir. We print our own signs.
Yeah, okay. So 1,1500 is total cost, including the time for people to do this.
Yes, sir. Estimated cost of $1,500, and I would like to applaud my team. It was a quick turnaround. It was not anticipated like you stated, but we were able to get it done in timely manner, and the school's extremely appreciative of that.
Well, I applaud you for, and the, I assume the police department has an interest in this because they can't give citations if it's outside of the ordinance time. So getting the ordinance changed, which is what we're about to do, is important, as well as the signage and the lighting.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sir, thank you.
I didn't see any other items that come before any council members, so we have items 7.1 through 7.8 on the consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to approve. Mr. White, second by Mr. Schaefer. Okay, we have a motion and second to approve all those items on the consent agenda, 7.1 through 7.8. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Kane. Thank you for, Mr. Smith, for your presentations. Now we move to the workshop. Item 8.1, presentation discussion, possible action regarding a recreation center feasibility study, Phase 2 update. Ms. Hayden and others who may be a part of this presentation, but I see Kelsey Hayden's name there as the lead, so I'm going to turn the floor over to her, and we'll proceed. And this is a workshop item. It says, "Presentation, discussion, possible action." I think our possible action would be simply to provide direction to staff if we wish to evaluate some aspects of what's being presented. Ms. Hayden, proceed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kelsey Hayden with Parks and Recreation. And tonight, we are here to provide counsel with an update on the Recreation Center feasibility study and present the final findings of the report. A recreation center, as you know, has been discussed for several years by this council and previous councils, and was identified as a strategic priority in the council's strategic plan. In late 2023, council gave direction to proceed with this feasibility study to answer three questions. Should we build indoor recreation center? Would the market and citizens support it? And what would the size, potential sites, and estimated costs look like? We went through an RFQ process and selected Brinkley Sergeant Wiggington, along with their subconsultant, Barry Dunn, and both are here tonight, and you'll hear from them shortly. But before we get started, I wanted to go over a little bit of the process. It was a two-phased approach. Phase one was a discovery process and included a market analysis, public engagement, and a statistically valid survey. The phase one findings were presented to council at an August 2024 meeting, and at that time, council gave direction to move forward with phase two. Phase two included potential space programs and site options, as well as an estimated capital cost and a draft pro forma for the facility. All of those reports were provided to council in your agenda packet, and they are all online on the Capital Projects site for the public to view. In addition, at each of your seats and online, we have a additional document called Vocabulary of Spaces, so it really gives you an idea of what types of spaces we're talking about as the consultants go through the presentation this evening. After the consultants present the findings and you have the opportunity to ask questions, we are seeking direction tonight for next steps on this project. I would like to, before I turn it over to our consultant team, I did want to highlight that we have two individuals here this evening. While they have large teams that have worked on this project, the two individuals that are here tonight, we're really excited to work with them because they are both prior practitioners. They have both been Parks and Recreation directors and both have had really long careers in public service. And so Jim Brown, he's with Brinkley Sergeant Wiggington. He has had over 40 years of experience in Parks and Recreation Services and was a Parks and Rec director in four different Texas cities. He is now a consultant, but prior to being a consultant, he was a Parks director. And then Jason Gank with Barry Dunn has over 27 years of leadership in Parks and Recreation and has served at a director capacity in various cities as well. And so I'm going to hand it over to Jim Brown with Brinkley Sergeant Wiggington. He's going to kick us off, and then he will hand it over to Jason Gank to finish off the presentation.
Thank you, Kelsey. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and share with you the results and findings of this study on your behalf. So we'll jump right in, but before I do that, I want to extend regrets from our team leader, Stephen Springs, who wanted to be here this evening but was unable to. He was recently inducted as a fellow into the American Institute of Architects, and the Dallas chapter is honoring him with a dinner this evening. So less than 3% of architects get that honor, so it's kind of a big deal, but he did want to send his regrets and let you know he's here in spirit this evening. I will provide a disclaimer as well. I am not an architect. As Kelsey mentioned, I'm a practitioner, manager, and operator of these types of facilities. So I want to go start with a brief overview of Phase one, and we'll move into Phase two shortly after that, and give a little recap of the engagement process. Many of you were part of that process and participated in some of the discovery sessions. I had the opportunity to meet and visit with a number of you during that process and gain some valuable information. We approached this study using four or five different methods to gauge community response, feedback, and input. One of those methods was a statistically valid survey. We issued 2,000 surveys randomly selected through a software program that our vendor ETC, which is a nationally-recognized survey and research firm, I believe they may have just completed or are in the process of doing your College Station Community Satisfaction Survey here. This is a group that we work with quite a bit with clients throughout the country. They received, we needed 400 surveys to achieve a 95% confidence level of plus or minus 4.5% or so margin of error. We received 455 responses, so we exceeded the number necessary to achieve the goal of statistical valid survey. And we followed up with those who didn't initially respond to make sure that we achieved over 400. So the results of that survey were some high-priority indoor amenities that included indoor running walking track, swimming pool for lap swimming, cardio equipment, free weight areas, swimming pool for leisure play, pickleball courts were very popular. Some of the medium-priority amenities included multi-use spaces for fitness or group exercise, therapeutic aquatics, indoor basketball, volleyball, and you can see the rest of the items that were included as the top priorities in those citizen responses. I'm going to ask Jason to come up and talk a little bit about a website that we hosted called Social Pinpoint to allow the community to provide other points of contact and input.
Thank you so much. Hi, Jason Gank with Barry Dunn, and just want to extend a thank you to council, mayor, and your staff. I've just been so delightful to work with, along with your community. And one of the services we provided was engagement in partnership with our prime, and we take a lot of pride and engagement to hear as many voices as possible in the communities we serve, many of which in Texas, and we always enjoy those opportunities. The online engagement platform is one of several techniques that we use to provide ways for the community to learn about the project considerations, to find out more what's going on, but also to have a voice and to provide input about considerations, and in this case, feasibility study for a potential recreation center. So we did have the platform live with the information you see there. Really good turnout as far as numbers that we've compared to other cities and organizations, and it's just another way for the community to stay informed and provide input. Little bit of information, and of course, the full report is in your packets. I won't go too far, but gives you a general idea here of just kind of at a very high level where some of the most interest is from your community members as far as the online platform goes, as to their areas of interest and potential recreation needs. Our findings, again, at a real high level, we just wanted to highlight that in addition to the online engagement opportunity, AM Statistical valid survey by our partners, the discovery sessions, leadership and staff, council members, and thank you again for your involvement, site review, steering committee, and so many other areas that the community had voices. And so the themes you're seeing there, family-oriented facility of interest, youth programs, sports leagues, senior facilities, absence of indoor pool, insufficient outdoor recreation facilities, I'm sorry, indoor, I meant to say, recreation facilities. And then a lot of attendees talked about things specific like pickleball courts, year-round indoor lap pool, and those types of things. So it just gives you a sampling. Again, the full report is in your packet, but a sampling of some of the things and the themes that we heard from your community.
Moving into the market analysis piece of the study, we did an assessment basically of your existing Parks and Recreation System, which is an award-winning department. You have a great staff. Your park system includes 56 developed parks, two splash pads, two outdoor pools, and we consistently heard from your community and your residents how much they value and appreciate those amenities and the wonderful job you're doing in outdoor recreation in particular. We also reviewed your indoor recreation services, and you have three facilities, the Lincoln Recreation Center, which, as you know, is a repurposed school facility that has a very strong attachment to the neighborhood, a lot of great local support for that facility, Southwood Community Center, and the Bob and Wanda Meyer Senior Community Center. All three of these facilities have a little age on them. They're kind of on the smaller end of the scale and spectrum in terms of contemporary recreation facilities, but very loyal followings for those that are participants and members of those facilities. So there's certainly some opportunity, we believe, for you to enhance, grow, and develop your indoor recreation opportunities here for the residents of the city of College Station. We took a look and did a benchmarking analysis of other communities of similar size and demographics to demographics to College Station. And you'll see on the top row, those three recreation facilities we just talked about a minute ago, basically breaking them into one recreation center, one community center, and one senior center, based on the services and the purpose of the programs that they provide. We took a three-pronged approach in benchmarking, looking at comparable communities in Texas, in the United States, and then we kind of zeroed in and focused on college-centric communities similar to College Station. In the benchmarking of Texas facilities, you'll see they typically have about 1.3 recreation centers on average, 4.2 community centers, one senior center, and a teen center. Across the nation, looking at other cities comparable to the demographics of College Station, you'll see 2.1 recreation centers, 1.9 community centers, a senior center, and a teen center. When we looked at college-centric communities, and in honor of the beginning of college football, we focused on a lot of SEC communities that in our benchmarking analysis, the recreation center number went up to 2.3, community centers 4.2, 1.3 for senior centers, and nearly two for teen centers. Usually, college communities have higher education levels. They appreciate health, wellness, fitness, and so that kind of supports the findings of having more facilities to serve those communities of these types. We took a look at the local market here in College Station and Bryan to look at what the competitive situation is here in this community and what market gaps might exist for consideration. We identified eight multi-service, similar types of facilities that had some level of components or amenity mix that might match up to a citywide type of community recreation center. And then we identified over 30 niche providers in the area that would be your gold gems, 24-hour fitness, yoga studios, martial arts studios, other businesses throughout this market region. Looking at those facilities, the one outlier obviously is the Texas A&amp;M University Recreation Center. They currently are experiencing about 1.2 million visits per year. So you can see on this graph the red line ranging from 55, 52, 55,000 when school is out to peak periods of over 100 up to 123,000 at the beginning of semesters and obviously January when everybody comes back and decides they're going to get in shape. The black line is an average of those eight multi-service comparable types of facilities. You can see the range there is between 12,000 to almost 19,000 monthly visits on those facilities. And the gray area indicates a potential market opportunity between 20 and 55,000 monthly visit-type facilities. There is currently not a service provider that fills that gap. And so there is a market opportunity potentially for success in this market for that type of facility. We took a look at travel times to those existing facilities using a technology called Placer AI, which tracks cellphone data and can determine travel times and visitations to facilities. And we discovered that the average travel distance times to other facilities here in College Station, that 30% travel less than three miles to one of these facilities, but 65% travel between three and 10 miles. So there's a willingness to travel a fairly significant distance to participate. Phase one summary findings overall. It was clear that your community shared with us that they have a desire for more indoor recreation opportunities. Some of those top needs related to indoor spaces include a multipurpose, family-oriented type of facility, things like walking track in the heat of summer and harsher winters. People are looking for an opportunity to exercise and walk indoors in addition to taking advantage of your great trail system, and a desire for swimming pools, year-round indoor opportunities to participate in those activities on a continuous basis. It clearly indicated that there were fewer indoor recreation facilities in College Station than the benchmark communities, that there's definitely opportunity for growth enhancement, additional services, and that those identified needs should be thought of in context of not only your current population, but your ultimate build-out population as well. What is the demand going to be now and in the future? And with regards to Texas A&amp;M in specific, I mentioned earlier, 1.2 million visits. They do a great job of serving their target market, which is college students. They do a fantastic job with that. I think they serve their faculty and staff pretty well as well. But the feedback we heard from your community is that there are some challenges, even though there are non-affiliated memberships available with regards to things like parking, accessibility, convenience, and maybe some comfort levels with working out with 18- to 22-year-olds for families and childrens. Their programming and intent is really for students and faculty members. So that was the feedback and comments we heard from your community regarding that facility in particular. Moving on, the next stage of the study included an assessment of some sites for potential recreation center location. Jason mentioned a city steering committee that was put together that included representatives from every city department that helped us go through this assessment process. So we had all the public safety, economic development, public works, Parks and Recreation, finance, human resource, everybody was involved in that process, bringing their special institutional knowledge and specialized knowledge with regards to this community. We reviewed six sites and also had Kimbley Horn and Associates do a civil engineering assessment on these six sites to identify any barriers, challenges, or opportunities, and establish a scoring criterion for that committee to use in evaluating. So going through that process with the subject matter experts here on your city staff, the top three out of that review were Wolf Pen Creek, the former Macy's Building, and Critic Tap and Central Park. You'll notice that the majority of these properties are properties that are currently in the city's inventory. They're currently owned by the city, and so it was important that we took a look at those first in an effort to try to mitigate potential land acquisition costs in this process. But this is just a beginning cursory review of these facilities, and any specific site that would be considered beyond this would require a much deeper dive and analysis than what's been done to this point. We conducted an exercise that we call Designing in Excel. This is a space program summary, taking all the priorities that your community shared with us that they wanted to see or would like to be able to enjoy in this type of facility. We were able to assign square footages to those based on the history of work we've done with other communities and other facilities that we've designed throughout the country. The basic breakdown is athletic and fitness spaces at about 40,500 square feet, indoor aquatics, 20,000, almost 24,000 square feet, and that's using basically some lap lanes and some leisure pool elements. If you want to do competitive swimming, that number would be larger. So there are some variables that need to be considered in the aquatics piece that will have an impact on the square footage that would be assigned to that if you consider moving forward. Program spaces of about 6,600 square feet, classrooms, multipurpose spaces, teaching kitchens, those types of things, administrative and support spaces at 6,600, common spaces at 2,400, totaling a little less than 80,000 square feet. And based on experience and history, we use a circulation factor of about 22% for things like hallways and space of walls and things that sometimes don't get counted in square footages. That totaled about 17,500 square feet. So at or around about 97,500 square feet designing a facility in space and spreadsheets. So when you get into site-specific considerations, there are other variables that'll have to be considered, obviously, but it gives you a snapshot of what those space allocations might look like. And we're going to move into the pro forma development, which is phase two. Before I pass it back to Jason, we just wanted to share some data points with you for your information and consideration. These are relatively recent Texas community recreation centers of a scope, scale, and magnitude of what might be considered here for College Station. You can see the facility name, the city, the population, the square footage of the facility, the construction budget at the time that it was bid. And then we also, in that middle column, we adjusted those square footage costs to 2025 figures, so you have a better apples-to-apples current-day comparison on those square footage costs. We identified whether or not they had indoor aquatics because that can drive cost as well, their operations and maintenance budgets, some fee information, operations per square foot, if it was operated by the city, or if it was yet to be determined, or third-party operators, and some full-time equivalent information in here, and the cost recovery, either performance, or their goals if they're a relatively new facility and just starting out. So we just want to give you a snapshot of some current examples of facilities so that you have some data points to reference and help understand. With that, I will turn over to Jason to talk about the pro forma.
Just a few more slides, but we worked with the steering committee with a variety of different modeling on cost recovery. And steering committee favored the 98% cost recovery. Of course, this is all preliminary based on conceptual considerations for programs and services, but the 98% target on cost recovery was considered and favored by the steering committee. And other models are, of course, in the report, but kind of just gives you, you know, sort of, well, what might this cost? And I think might is a really important question. Who operates it? What's offered? You know, desired cost recovery, a host of other things would be considered. But generally speaking, the steering committee, again, landing on 98%, so the subsequent slides would be interested in looking at and reflect these fees. And on the bottom there, what you're seeing is generally hours based on other facilities' operations, but also based on the favor of the steering committee as possible hours of operation. This graph here just is a real quick snapshot of comparable resident monthly rates. There's other modeling for non-resident annual and drop-in and whatnot, but this gives you an idea of some of the general understanding of resident monthly rates on some comparable facilities. If you see one there that has zero, that's simply because they don't offer that particular category of a membership or monthly fee. From a five-year pro forma, our firm Barry Dunn was founded as an accounting and finance firm over 50 years ago, so we really, really take this information seriously. Also, we utilize your data, meaning your cost of service, your current cost of benefits, utilities, you name it. And that's largely done by the access that staff provides for the data. And I just, again, want to say how helpful and collaborative staff have been. So here again, on a conceptual level, based on what may go in as a consideration, the steering committee favored this model here. And it kind of, again, just gives you a quick overview, and there's much more details, but a quick overview, well, what does that mean at 98%? What are you considering? And just to kind of an overview here for that.
Do you have any concluding remarks? Or you want us to?
And that concludes the presentation, so we're certainly open it up to discussion from council and any questions that you might have.
We're going to ask each council member a chance, but let me ask a general question first, and I sent this to you in advance. There is a steering committee, and these gentlemen referred to the steering committee as having guided them. My understanding of the information I received is that steering committee only met one time. Is that correct?
That is correct. They met on July the 10th, but in the last two slides that you saw in regards to the hours of operation as well as the fees for the facility were two decision points that we leaned on the steering committee for. We had two different options that we presented to them on July 10th, and the ones that you saw tonight were the options that they favored over the alternate.
But the report that we got a week or so ago, the full report, has both scenarios in it, correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
But I was just, I guess I'm puzzled a little bit why we had a steering committee if they only met one time. It doesn't sound like a chance for them to see the results and reflect and come back and provide any serious guidance to the process.
Certainly. So we moved forward with the steering committee in late April, and then we had four community members that were selected at large through an application process, which took a couple months to post that, I'm sorry, a couple weeks, not months, a couple weeks to post those positions. And then we had over 30 applications that we reviewed and selected four members, as well as moving forward with the various different stakeholders from other organizations, trying to get them to identify a representative for each of those groups. And so that took a little bit of time, and for the sake of getting this information back to council by the end of summer, we did only have that one opportunity to meet. I would also say, though, depending on direction tonight, if council moves forward with a potential rec center, that steering committee would lead us through the next process in terms of really identifying a potential site, and then what the program makeup of the recreation center looks like in terms of spaces and then program offerings. So they would move forward with that process if we moved forward.
Were all the members in attendance? I saw the list of members, but did they all show up?
All but one. One of the park board representatives was not able to make it.
Okay, but you did have the external people. Some of those were representing other facilities, university and private sector and others. So they were there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think what we're going to do, we'll shake this up a little bit. Everybody has a question or two, I'm sure, and I think I'll start with Ms. McLehaney, and we'll go that way. Then I'll come back to Mr. White, and we'll go that way. It's just a different way of doing it, right? Everybody has time to think. So Ms. McLehaney.
First of all, I am very impressed with the quality of this report. You know our town, you spent time to identify our needs. This is a stark contrast to some of the other reports that we may get from other entities, but I'm really impressed. So thank you very much for the data-heavy report. Would you mind going back to slide 11? Just taking a little while. So I know we've got the recreation centers there, and then the follow-on slides also mention the A&amp;M rec facilities. When you're looking at the, this here, are you backing out the student population because they're served by that one?
We're not backing out the student population. We, any student facilities are backed out, so we're looking at the facilities that the community provides for their citizenry at large, if I understand your question.
So it's my understanding that students are in our census data, our population calculation?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, so if you're determining how many rec centers are available for a certain population, if we're backing out those rec centers, presumably we would back out the population that is serving. I'm just wondering if the numbers are skewed, if we've got a population that's heavy on students without, I mean, because it's big. I don't know if you've noticed, it's huge.
Texas A&amp;M is by far the most populated student campus that we're aware of. 75,000, is that right?
Significant, yeah.
Yes, is it my recollection? So on the, about eight or 10 benchmark communities that were also college-centric, there's going to be some variation on the enrollment. So that range actually runs from about 24,000 up to, and we were using about 72,000 for A&amp;M at this point in time of the study. So yes, there is some variation there, but it's going to be almost impossible to really get an apples-to-apples identical comparison with Texas A&amp;M being the largest student population probably around.
It just, I'm just wondering how skewed it is, if we're not counting the facilities, but we are counting the student population.
Councilwoman McLehaney, one of the decision points that we made through the process was to add in the comparison to the college towns, kind of that last one on this slide. Initially, when we were looking at comparisons, we were just looking at how we stacked up to other Texas cities and cities in the U.S. But because we are such a unique community, we wanted to compare ourselves to communities like ours, and that is what that last line is. So we chose college communities that had very large student populations compared to their their permanent resident populations, just like us, and then included that population because they live here and do use facilities off of the campus. But in all cases, then, there for the universities backed out their recreation centers.
Okay.
So that was supposed to be the apples-to-apples, was that last one.
So maybe a little skewed because we're so big? Okay. That was my primary question. Great job.
Thank you.
Mr. Nancy, you have questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll try to move through them. We'll appoint these at you rapid-fire, if that's okay. What's the difference between a statistically significant and a statistically valid study?
I think it's two different ways of saying the same thing. We probably should have used consistent language on that.
Okay, so you guys warrant that your analysis, your survey, was statistically significant in its population size. You guys had way up high, as far as what people want, a family-oriented facility. But then when we get to the child watch area, it was very, very low. Can you reconcile that?
Yeah, I think human nature is to be more excited about the fun things as opposed to the kind of routine necessities. And child watch is an included service in the membership, so it's implied that that's going to be available no matter what the mix of other amenities are in the facility. It's kind of a core component, serving those other elements, if that makes sense.
Keep that one in the back of your mind, because I'm going to come back to it on another question. On page 431 of our packet, "None chosen under the question which four spaces, amenities from the list, and question nine are the most important to your household." The largest response was "none chosen." Why would somebody go through a long survey and not answer that question?
That's an individual response and choice. It could be survey fatigue by the time you get to that point.
And I'm not sure I understood exactly how my significantly more intelligent colleague was getting at this point. I'm going to come at it a different way. You say city of, on this slide, you say city of College Station rec centers, one, college towns, 2.3, right?
Right.
My simple question is, in that 2.3 and other college towns, would facilities such as the one in Bryan, Legends, or the rec center for Texas A&amp;M, are they included in that 2.3?
Yes, the one in College Station was the first one that we referred to in terms of the Lincoln Recreation Center that best fit the definition of a recreation center in using this comparative benchmarking analysis.
Yes, sir, but I guess my point is, benchmarked college communities, we captured up the entire market basket of recreation centers within those communities, but...
Councilmember Nancy, because I think I understood your question, and I think that maybe Jim did not. Legends, since it is in Bryan, it was not counted. We only counted city of College Station facilities. Likewise, with the other university communities. If they are neighboring communities, we did not count facilities in neighboring communities.
What about their university?
We did not count their university recreation centers either.
Okay, those are controlled and removed.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
apologies, I misunderstood your question. Thank you.
Not a problem. And then, and you did mention, Texas A&amp;M has this massive behemoth rec center, and it is available to non-affiliates.
Yes, yes.
I mean, we might do better at marketing or enter some kind of partnership with the university, right? I mean, so that people would go use it? Or do you see barriers to that working?
I think the issues that we shared is just a collection of the feedback that we heard from your community when we asked them that exact same question, you know, do you use it, and if not, why not? And those were the examples of the reasons that they were less likely to use that facility than they might have a facility that's designed to serve specifically the community, families, children, senior adults, et cetera.
And your pro formas, they were all based on operating expenses and revenue, right? Did I skip right over it and miss it, which is very possible, but I didn't see, you guys didn't have capital cost recovery, bond indebtedness, debt service?
Correct.
It's not in there.
It's straight maintenance and operations of the actual operation of the facility.
Okay, and then DOS rec has 98 employees, but didn't I see in here where your pro forma was based on like 13, 17?
It's a little confusing because it's reported a little bit differently, and so what that actual number, that 12 and a half is full-time employees, the half-employees being shared with other functions in the city. The part-time employees actually total up about 48 FTEs, full-time equivalents. So that number for the proposed facility based on these square footages is actually 60.5.
Okay, and then my last question. Out of six locations, we have a neighborhood here, a master plan community, that largely its very existence was predicated on the placement of a YMCA or a rec center being located there. We call it Midtown.
Right.
Why didn't Midtown get any, not even a look on what you guys did?
In the initial review of previous planning documents that have been conducted for, well, actually, on behalf of the YMCA, the four square studies that, I think there were two, and the most recent one in 2021, they conducted a statistically valid survey of the community, looking at three different sites. One was near Fire Station 6, I believe, one was Central Park Beach, Steve Beachy Park, and the third was the Midtown site you're referring to, I believe. In that citizen survey, I believe the Beachy Central Park was at like 75% favorable. The Fire Station 6, which is actually now a niche recreation facility, private, was at like 67%, and the Midtown site was at 36, 37%. So it was third out of three that were evaluated in that study by four square done on behalf of the YMCA. So the ones that we, as I mentioned earlier, that we focused on were those that were currently primarily under city ownership currently to mitigate land acquisition costs. The other one was kind of opportunistic because it was close to a school facility, so there might be some shared parking benefits and opportunities, and those were the six facilities the city asked us to review and assess.
And I have one more question. The 30 gyms that you guys identified, a significant part of the, what I'll call tangible versus programming wants that came out of your survey, we've got private sector that duke it out amongst themselves and offer $20 a month, or introductory $18, first six months free. What's going to happen to all those businesses if we build something like this?
Yeah, it's an interesting point, and I understand the importance of that question as well. And actually, I guess I will use an anecdotal example from the steering committee. When we met with them, there were two representatives from Texas A&amp;M University, one who was the manager of that facility while it was under construction and being built and opened, and the current manager of that facility as well. They shared with us that they heard very much the same type of feedback, that that type of facility was going to be, have a negative impact on those smaller niche facilities. They shared that they believe there was about 10 in the community at that time, and immediately after the opening of the Texas A&amp;M University Recreation Center, three or four of those did drop off the inventory. But you'll see from our study, there's now over 30 in the community. And one of the, the phenomena that we observe, and we run into this question quite frequently, is, you know, what is the impact going to be on those private providers? And what we've observed is the community recreation center really kind of becomes a recreation economic incubator. They can partner and collaborate with those smaller facilities, have them bring instructors or fitness trainers, et cetera, in to partner and collaborate with the city's facility to help grow the recreation programs and services. Many times, people coming to community recreation center facilities, they're coming as an entry participant, so this is their first exposure to something, they're beginner level or recreational level, and they fall in love with it and decide, hey, this is something I want to spend more time and develop higher levels of skill. And so they end up transitioning out to the private providers that provide those higher levels of training, skill, opportunity, and recreational experiences. So it can be a very symbiotic relationship where it's mutually beneficial to both if it's approached properly from a management perspective.
Thanks for your responses, and thanks for the study. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Schaefer.
Thanks, Mayor. So I would repeat what both of my colleagues have said. I think you guys did a really nice job with the report, and appreciate the completeness of it. I would go back to, just like the first two council members have, the information that was gathered, and you mentioned the statistically significant survey, but I think Bob made this point about validity, and so I'm wondering if you all were able to look at the, let's take the 455 that you got on surveys. Was there a look at how that represented the demographics of College Station in terms of racial makeup, socio-demographics of other kind?
Absolutely. And in the initial programming for the random selection of the households that were mailed the survey packets, that demographic distribution was taken into consideration in the beginning, and then also, we were going to collect surveys until we matched up to your demographics here in College Station. So the 455, which exceeded the 400, which were typically nested as kind of a baseline, helped us achieve that exact goal.
Okay, so you're feeling good about the way it represents the demographics of the community?
That's correct. And I'm speaking on behalf of ETC. They are the nationally recognized survey and polling firm, so...
Right, right, okay. The, to address, Bob, the point you made is a good one about the rec and Texas A&amp;M, and I've used the Texas A&amp;M facilities as a faculty member there, and then I've also used community facilities. And what I would say about the rec is that it does a very good job of serving the students. It's not, it's not really, in my opinion, that great, I mean, a lot of faculty members use it, a lot of staff members use it, but the prices charged, we don't get a break, I wouldn't say. Students are charged a fee for the recreation center, whether they use it or not, it's got an automatic fee charged to their statements. So everybody who's a student pays for the recreation facilities on campus, and they have continued to increase those to meet the student demand. And that's one of the issues that I think a lot of people in the community might have with it, just to expand on that, is that it's very busy.
Yes.
And it's very 20, it's very 18 to 24-year-old focused.
Right.
It's almost like going to a bar and having a lot of things happen that you might, you know, visiting, sitting around. It's a very different type of use than what you might see in the typical family use, or even the typical, what I would say, you know, young professional or old professional use. So it's a different deal, and I think this kind of recreation center, the folks you were talking to in the community recognize that, and it makes sense. I guess I don't really have, I need some more time to think about it. I know we've had the report for a while. One of the things that I'm having a hard time, because I've just got some anecdotal stuff from people I've talked to, is some people really are interested, as you all pointed out, in the aquatics piece and the water piece, indoor. Other people I've talked to think that we have, they're concerned about the amount of use that might actually happen with lap swimming, for example. We have people in the community who are absolutely dedicated to their lap swimming. There's no doubt about it, and they're passionate about it, and I'm sure they showed up and emphasized that. Others I've talked to say, well, if you look at some of the facilities we do have in town already, including possibly something that may be passe at this point, but we had a facility that we share with CSISD, if that were to be maybe, you know, redone so that it was more up-to-date, et cetera. Anyway, the idea of the aquatics piece is something that has me questioning whether we would go that direction. I think some of the other things, the indoor track, the opportunity to do meetings and maybe events in a place like this, basketball, maybe indoor pickleball, some of those kinds of things in terms of indoor recreation make a lot of sense.
Yes.
So that's just a commentary on kind of where I am, based on what you all have done and what you're reporting back. And I'll, I think I'll probably leave it there for now. Thank you again for the work you've done.
Absolutely, thank you. The one thing I would add, and I couldn't have said what you said better than what you just said, is a piece of the secret sauce on these type of facilities is really the diversity of the mix of the amenities. So having fitness, having lifetime learning, having aquatic swimming opportunities, it's the diversity in being able to sample of a whole variety of different recreational pursuits and activities to kind of determine what your passion really is, or just your general overall health, wellness and fitness. That's what drives memberships, having choices and being able to do different things and have different experiences. And the memberships are key to the financial success of the pro forma, so thank you for your comments.
Mr. White.
Thank you. I guess let me go ahead and go on record by saying that, you know, I totally understand it's a statistical significant study, but 455 just does not seem a lot of responses to me. But it is, and that's great. Just, I just want to start off by more kind of a knowledge question for me, it could be showing my generation here. What's a teen center?
It's a recreation facility that is designed for activities that are of interest of pre-teens and teens. You'll often find they have game rooms, they may have a gymnasium, they may have video gaming areas. It's really designed to try to appeal to the most popular activities and leisure pursuits of teenagers today, and it's really kind of a socialization opportunity to hang out with their friends, have some constructive, positive activity, so...
So more of the small rec center, but more games that are included in...
Yes, designed and targeted to that particular demographic.
Some of the questions I had were demographics, and you definitely addressed those. I'm going to kind of focus on some of the highlights that came out of the study. Aquatics, as was mentioned earlier, is another one. This did not take in consideration the Bryan pools, right? Even though some of the people who might have responded to this survey would probably utilize that because it was a high-ranking type of thing. Is that correct?
Yeah, the outdoor pools in particular are kind of a little bit of an outlier for an indoor recreation center. Now, we do see very often indoor recreation centers with indoor aquatics and outdoor aquatics, maybe a combination of the both, but the Bryant Aquatic Center was evaluated and looked at, but general outdoor swimming pools were not as germane to the indoor recreation context of the study.
So, but the aquatics from your study came back to do lap lanes and then leisure pool, correct?
Correct.
And maybe somebody who has more of a historical knowledge, didn't the city of College Station build some pools back in the 2008, 2010 range, and they didn't make? I mean, does anybody have that, that they closed down like in 2018? That's kind of the research that I'm finding, the College Station School District. Do they partner?
So there's a, we closed down Thomas Park Pool, which was not a, it was never a pool, and then there was a, a long time ago, there was a partnership between College Station ISD...
Right.
And at College Station Middle School, and they, the College Station ISD did, I think in 2018, or maybe not, the last bond, put some money in to redo that pool, so maybe that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, I think that's exactly what this was.
Just to clarify, because I, City College Station did have an active partnership there, and...
They did, right?
But City College Station, I believe, decided at some point that they weren't, wasn't the value there to continue to provide some O&amp;M to the school district because they weren't getting a lot of use from citizens. Just to clarify, I think, why that change happened.
So, I mean, in relatively speaking, that one that far back, you know, less than 10 years ago and stuff like that, so I keep on, I keep on thinking that aquatics has a very, you know, high O&amp;M cost, you know, to it. So is that really a high priority for this rec center? And another thing that came out was the walking, indoor walking.
Yep.
I will tell you, folks in my neighborhood, when the weather is bad, they just go to the mall.
Exactly.
And they walk to the mall. I mean, is that, explain what an indoor was just a loop around the top of the...
Yeah, so indoor tracks in contemporary community recreation centers have kind of evolved. They started out as really just kind of going around the perimeter of the gyms, or maybe around the perimeter of the aquatic facility or the fitness area, and people walk to get their laps in when there's inclement weather, or it's too hot, or it's too cold. We've seen an evolution of some of those walking tracks now. too cold. We've seen an evolution of some of those walking tracks now that include challenge course elements to it. So there'll be inclines, and there may be a station where you do boot camp type of activities. There can be a whole variety of special aspects to that to make it more interesting, more challenging, different levels of fitness, et cetera. So there is some variation that can be considered with those. But we do find in the facilities that we've designed, they're extremely popular. People enjoy them, use them, and it's very consistently at the top of the list of recommendations or requests from the communities.
My next couple of questions have to do with the economic aspect of this. You're proposing about an eight times larger facility than we currently have in the city. And if you could pull up that slide that actually had the cost breakdown of what a membership would be?
This slide?
No, go, keep on going.
Oh, down, okay.
This, that one right there.
Okay.
So, so what, I know you're doing 98% cost recovery on this, but what does that equate to number of memberships for that?
It's about 6,500 memberships. 6,450, I think, is the number. And we actually completed four different pro formas, using two different timeframes, and generating a range of 85% to 101% in cost recovery. So, I'm sorry, your question?
Well, I would, the 6,500 is what I was getting at. So that's, that's on an annual basis, correct?
Yes, 6,500 annual memberships. Then there's a, there's a breakdown of, you can do monthly memberships, you can do daily admissions, but it's based on 65, about 6,500 members per year. And that's based on historical data and knowledge we have of other facilities on what their membership numbers of a comparable size and amenity mix. And we very much, very intentionally projected, one consistently, that number through all four pro formas, but also a very conservative estimate on that to under-promise as opposed to overestimate. An example I would give you, and I know you've heard a lot about DOS rec over a period of time, they're currently at 11,000 members on a smaller facility than what's proposed here. So it's definitely at the low end of the realm of possibility.
Do, do you think we could save money by outsourcing maybe to the YMCA to run this facility?
I don't believe that's the purview of our study and our recommendation to you. I think that's a decision point that you and your staff will be working on, based on, now that you have some of this information to work from in the future. But that's not really within my purview to make that recommendation to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wright?
Thanks for the presentation. I think everybody's covered a lot of it. I wanted to ask just maybe one or two questions about cost, not this cost, the other cost for the facility. If you go to that slide for me, please.
Sure.
Yeah. Is, so the 65 to 80, I know that's just sort of a ballpark. Is that just straight from the ground up? That wouldn't be, right, we go buy the land and we're building, that's what the cost would be?
That was, does not include land acquisition.
Doesn't include land acquisition, but that is the cost for a new build, right?
It's a range that, based on the square footage that we've designed in space, just the exercise in Excel, because site considerations, there's a number of variables that will come into play, and that's why we've kind of selected to use a range there. You have many decision points to make that, to help further define what that, what that actual estimate might be.
So you think 65 is considering an existing facility, you would say? The lower end of that would be considering like infill?
That would be if you designed it and built it today.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
How much significantly cheaper would it be for infill if we went and bought some of those already existing? Do we have any idea?
I think that would be related to that specific property, and that typically is a generality, when you try to convert an existing building or renovate or rehabilitate, it's going to be a higher per square foot cost because you have to do the demolition, you have to redesign, replace, rebuild. But there is no simple answer to that. It is very site-specific. So to give you accurate feedback on that, we would need an example.
Well, one of the examples is, one of the examples is the Post Oak Mall Building, which we own. So that's why I was just curious what that number would look like, because that, to me, would ultimately, if we chose to do this, and we consider that site, that should be ultimately cheaper since that infrastructure's already in place. I just didn't know if it was significant in the $20 million cheaper range, or, I mean?
Impossible to say without doing a more fully detailed assessment and evaluation. There could be cost savings for parking, but there could be increased costs for demolition and renovation replacement. So some of those things may offset each other, but without doing a really deep dive into, and that wasn't part of the scope of our study,
Yeah.
we would, we would not be able to give you anything other than just best guess.
Okay. That was really my question, because if we went through with this, it'd be interesting to find infill in places that we could actually put this, or not building something brand-new. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Well, thank you for the report. I really learned a lot from it. And also learned a lot from listening to all the questions and answers from all my colleagues. And I really can't think of another one to add to it. So I appreciate the presentation and the answers that you've given.
Thank you. Well, it's been our privilege to work with your staff and to work with you all, and to get to know your community. And we wish you the best in your decision-making process.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I haven't asked my question, but I don't have any. That's all right. I don't have any right now, but I don't want you to disappear.
Sure.
We're gonna, we got three people signed up that I want to hear from, that we all want to hear from.
Absolutely.
Who have signed up. And then I think the council still has a little work to do regarding direction to staff, which I think is what they are looking for from the council, of where to go next with regard to this report and all the information we got to this point. So thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you.
I do have three people signed up to speak, so let me call those forward in the order that they were given to me. We'll start with Mr., with former mayor, Mayor Carl Mooney, and he'll be followed by Trey Watson, and then third speaker will be Valen Cepick. So, Mayor Mooney, welcome.
Again, kind of strange to be in this spot.
You only got three minutes, sir.
I know. Well, that's hard. Real quick, to address Mr. Schaefer was, Councilman Schaefer was talking about the economic factors. I haven't heard anyone talk about the fact that when the initial study was done by the YMCA about having a competitive lap pool, USA Swimming said that we would be able to expect in the neighborhood of four major events here due to our location. And of course, that means heads and beds, that's hotels, that's just about everything that you could expect on a weekend like we're going to have now. I'm also wanted to invite all of you, because none of you were here when the council actually made a trip to some of the YMCA's in Round Rock, Cedar Park, and Hutto, which is now just expanded because they have over 4,000, and they're expected to have a much larger population there in their Y. So again, if any of you would like individually or collectively as a group, I'd be happy to arrange it so that you can come out and see just what a recreation center can look like. Georgetown, if you'd like to go online, look at Georgetown. The city of Georgetown has just begin, begun construction of their recreation center, which will be run by the YMCA. Good relationship for them. Of course, obviously, I'm hoping that that might come to fruition here as well. But if there's ever any question that you have, or you'd like me to come back to speak to a committee, a group, or whatever, or even further study, I've been doing this for a few years, so I think I can probably provide some information. And I hope I'm within my three minutes, Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you also for, the YMCA for having opened a partnership project, I think, using some of our park facilities this summer.
We did. We actually started with, we had a summer camp this summer, right next at Fellowship Church. You're all going to be invited to our ribbon cutting. We will have a more permanent office now. We've hired our local director, Mike Collins, who has some YMCA experience from Montana, has come down here mainly because his wife got a job at the vet school. But we are already speaking with several HOAs in the neighborhood. We will be doing swim lessons at those HOAs next summer. We will be providing vacation time camps. That's during Thanksgiving, and particularly between Christmas and New Year's for folks that need to work, but the kids aren't in school. So what do you do with school? What do you do with those school kids? So we're stepping in there. And I know our seniors are anxious about us developing a relationship. We have a local hospital that's excited about working with us with daycare, and also with a, what was called the Mature Well Life Center that was canceled by St. Joe's Hospital.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Trey Watson. Followed by Valen Cepick.
Welcome, sir.
Hello, hello. Good evening. How are y'all?
Good.
So I was fortunate to be a part of that steering committee, but the only thing I felt like we were able to steer was the membership prices, which was not what I expected when I signed up for. About the rec center, it looks like they just want to build a bigger Lincoln Center, and I don't really see how that's going to help. I've been speaking about us getting a new rec center before majority of y'all were even on council. I think Mayor Nichols was a councilman at the time, and Mayor Mooney was the current mayor. I think this is something we definitely need in our city. If you pay attention to how great Legends have been doing with AU basketball, the, I think every month during the summer, they filled up that, the rec center. But they also, you had to use Davila and Sadberry gyms because those gyms couldn't, those gyms were not enough. If College Station can bring something similar to that, we would fill up our rec center as well, we're having just six gyms. So we always talk about what can we do in the summertime. If you pay attention to Legends, their event center was filled with, just last weekend, they had a gun show. They've had other events as well that's kept their events in their field. So I feel like if College Station's going to bring a rec center here, we need to do something similar to what Legends is doing, and try to partner with them, or basically capitalize of us being the middle of the triangle. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Cepick?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I think using the old Macy's building would be a poor decision. I think the square footage they're offering, you would want to cut back some. From some of the homework I've done, and it could be wrong, one of the largest YMCA's, if we're looking at a partnership with them, in the state is in Houston, and it's 115 square foot, has 20,000 members, to my understanding, right about. Okay, if we're expecting that type of turnout, but we can only get .38 of our population to reply to a survey, I think our numbers are wrong, right? I don't think that lines up the way we anticipated. However, we also have 16 private gyms in the area with costs that start at $9 a month. So if this is about affordability, and this is about giving back to people who may not be able to afford it, are we offering grants to some families? Are we going to offer opportunities for them to pay less than the commercial gyms all over the city already grant some, the access to some of these amenities? I agree that the A&amp;M facilities is not for everybody, but even their monthly, if you break it down for a non-student, is $32 outside of 34. It just, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me to build something this big if you don't have a partner secure, if you don't know what the membership rate's going to be, and you don't know how many people at that price, at $34 a month, are actually going to sign up to use it when you have free options like the mall and other amenities that are in the county rather than just the city of College Station. I just, I think there needs to be some more homework done on, if you're going to do this, are you going to do it with a partner? And then what is that partner really willing to manage to go forward? Have you had direct conversations with the YMCA? Like Mr. Mooney said, I mean, the guy they've brought in, he's, Mike is great. I go to Fellowship Church. I'm actually helping Mike plan a big event for them to launch in November that you all will be invited to, and I'm very excited about the Y being here and offering programs. But if those conversations haven't been had, I mean, this feels like a silly conversation to be having now, because I don't think this is something the city wants to take on alone, especially at the price. I don't know how that's affordable, and I don't know how people who would want to use it could pay that if they're already pinching pennies in other areas. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay. I think what, what staff is hoping to get out of this is some direction. I've heard a lot of questions, and I think only one person so far, I think, has kind of shared a view and direction, but I think everybody ought to help with that. I have watched this evolve over time with, when I was on council, as was previously mentioned, with the Mayor Mooney. We have had conversations with the YMCA. I would not expect that this thing would go forward without some further refinement and evaluation. Mr. Wright brought up the whole issue of capital cost, which is not reflected anywhere in here. So I think the concept has always been that we will fund the capital cost out of various revenue sources the city has, whether it's taxes, debt, hot tax, or whatever funds. And so I think we need to have some discussion about that, and whether or not we take it to the voters to, to take, to evaluate it. Mr. White pointed out that it's only 458 people, but if we put it on a bond issue, and we ask people to yes, what do you want? I mean, you've got to frame it, obviously. You then got everybody that's interested to say thumbs up or not. I think there's always been a thought that at some point, this needs to go to the voters as part of a general obligation bond approach, which is as best as I could favor doing. And I think it makes some sense if we're going to offer that to a capital, a capital campaign, I mean, a bond evaluation committee, and ask them how they would want to present that. I think I'd like to see further development. Mr. Cepick talked about a whole lot of unknowns. Certainly, we don't have a location identified, but we have sort of talked about, it's a little cheaper to build it on land or building you already own, and that may factor into the discussions as we narrow it down before you take something to voters. So I don't see a bond issue going forward, at least in my mind, till November 2027. So I think we got some time to refine all of this and decide how we're going to fund the basic capital cost, assuming we want to do it, first of all. And that's sort of where I'm at on this. And I'd, I'd like to see other thoughts that, we'll start with Mr. Smith and move this way. What's your thinking about what kind of direction you want to give to city staff, if any?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I think we, we do ultimately need to go to the voters for their direction on this, but I can't see us being able to take it to the voters until we get a lot more definition. They, so they know exactly what they're voting on. So I think we have some more work to do, and I think that we need to do that work. Otherwise, you know, how will we get that answer from the voters? And so my take is, we need to continue on with this process. We need to firm up just what the rec center looks like, what amenities it would offer, and we need to pick a site so that we can find out who's behind it and who's not. What I'm hearing from constituents in the community is they're very interested in having a rec center. I think it's something that our community can use. But what it has, you know, the devil's in the details. That's where, that's where we need to, we need to get more detail so that we can ask for that vote.
Mr. Wright?
I, I think I've been pretty vocal about, being pretty skeptical about this and not being sold this entire sort of process we've been through on the rec center. I still remain there. I think it's a, I think it could work really well, and I think I could see all the ways that it maybe just isn't exactly where we need to be spending our money right now. But I hypocritically perhaps think that we should see this process through, because at some point, I think, until we finish the process, the question will just keep getting asked, and then we'll just kind of keep going through these half-step motions. So I'd rather see the process all the way through and get to a resolution or conclusion at the end than abandon it at any point. So I would just push through on whatever the next phase of the study is, and, you know, maybe, maybe something will snap, and I'll be like, oh, yeah, this sounds amazing. So, yeah, I look forward to it. But I think it's just worthwhile to see it all the way through.
Mayor?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
The, I know the study's got phases in it. Would it be possible to hear what the next phases are prior to giving our opinion?
Well, you can, each of us can articulate that one. Well, you can, each of us can articulate that when it comes to it, and then I'm gonna go back to staff and ask if frankly, the other four, the other four people might say to hell with it, we don't want it at all.
Yeah, I just don't know what I'm commenting on.
Yeah, well, I think, I think that's a good question. Do you wanna answer that now?
Sure. In, in terms of the study, the feasibility study, this is the conclusion of the study. And so any additional work, we'd have to go back out to do additional scope or additional process in terms of future, if it was additional site programming or looking at site-specific locations and doing more in-depth study of those, but in terms of the feasibility study, we're at the conclusion of both Phase One and Phase Two.
Yeah, and let me just say, here's what I see that we're asking council. If you want us to move forward, so we talked a little bit about different elements, the advisory committee and these type of things, this is what it would really look like. If you all say, knowing what you know now from this study, you want it to go forward, then we would continue with the advisory. We would, again, use consultants. We'd basically program it, so kinda get a better idea of what are we actually proposing would go into this facility, and then what would that cost? And then again, you get kinda pro forma back, and then that would come to you guys with the intent of, of putting it on a bond or whatever you would do with it. So, but if you're, if at this stage you're like, there's not really anything that you could come up with that we would want to put forward, then you would say no. But what we would be doing now is going forward with the intent that we are trying to come up with something to, to put on a bond. And again, could be to put towards a bond advisory committee or whatever that process is. But this would be essentially saying, go forward with it to a level of design that lets us show what it would be, cost it, and then you decide if you're ultimately putting it on a bond or issuing debt or whatever you would do. So there's not, I mean, this is first phase, and this, we're intended to give you the information to say we're either in conceptually, assuming that it can deliver specifically, or we're out.
Yes, back to you, Mr. White.
Well, thank you.
Did that help you?
Absolutely. That, that was extremely helpful because this is the-
I was hoping we could tell them what to do.
Yeah, well, this is the part of the process that's really fascinating to me because we get here, we have this fabulous discussion, we have a great presentation. I'm convinced that this city needs to have a rec center, okay? I think we need to have a rec center. When, where, I'm not sure of those answers, okay? If we had to make a decision together, I would probably really talk about whether we should have aquatics in it, okay? But that's just where I'm, I'm coming from. Do we need a rec center this year? Do we need a rec center next year? We have a lot of things that we're talking about, big projects for this city. I'm not sure where a rec center would fall into my priority list right now, but I believe this city needs a rec center, okay? Do we need to have a 97,000 square foot rec center? Those are the questions I don't know. So I'm, like my colleagues, I'm ready to continue to move momentum, kick the ball down the road a little bit, but I don't wanna, I, I wanna come back with a, a definite plan where we say, this is kind of where our three options are. If it's Macy's, if it's the other, you know, parks, this is where we wanna do, and so we evaluate that and make a decision to move forward or not on that.
Thank you, Mr. White. Ms. McLeeny?
While I'm very enamored with the quality of this report, this absolutely is something that I would not consider unless it went out for a, a general obligation bond. I think I'm hearing that from other members of council, too. Are we at the point where we could put this in to a bond evaluation committee, or do we need to do more work to get it there? It seems to me we've got like a $40 million price tag on a really nice facility-ish.
So, so I think going back to the first phase, if I remember, the program, the size that you guys picked was more in the 50 to 75 million. I think that you are, you, you could do it. You could put it to a bond advisory committee, but I think you guys, what we have to do to tell them is, does it have a pool in it? Does it have a competition pool? Is it non-aquatics? Like, we need to, I mean, you need to know a little bit more of what it's gonna be, whether or not, where it's located and stuff can be decisions, but I think that's, I mean, probably aquatics and then the programming piece, which is where that advisory committee and then coming back to you guys would be. That's the last kind of a piece.
Okay, so you said that there would be an additional consultant contract.
Well, there could, there could be. I mean, it just depends, you know, if we need somebody to, to kind of, again, say, okay, we've heard from advisory committee here what we've heard, program that together and, and see what the size would be, then that's where we might use some consults. But I think that's the piece before you would go to a bond is you'd have to tell, a bond committee has to tell them what it is that you're asking them to do, that, like, almost the preliminary engineering stage of a project.
I would be supportive of that. I think that the, I have no problem with the 455 responses. If it's statistically valid, it's statistically valid. I think we should get to the point where we could put this to a, a bond advisory committee. There's too much interest in it to not get it to that point, but I don't wanna carry the ball any further down the field than we have to in order to prepare for that, that committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Yancy.
Thank you, Mayor. I would never be opposed to rolling out a project like this to the voters. I think that would be an absolute prerequisite before we moved forward. I'm altogether unconvinced that we should. I, I landed here in 1989, and I feel like half the time I've lived in this town, we've been talking about a rec center. And we had very articulated, focused visions a decade before I was on council about putting one at Midtown. And I feel like as a lay citizen back then, that a large part of the entire Midtown development was predicated on ultimately a rec center going out there. And here we've gotten all these studies and surveys and gone back and forth, and we haven't even seriously looked at Midtown. So I, I do not support, I just feel like we have just run this thing to ground. I, I do not support moving forward, but if we do, I don't know how in the world it goes anywhere else, but in Midtown. And the whole site selection thing feels very arbitrary to me, like we just decided, nope, not gonna look at Midtown. I don't, I don't, that doesn't compute for me. And then I guess overarching my opposition is we have, what, $50 million in discretionary projects ongoing right now, Texas Independence Park and Veterans Park, that, as I understand the process, those decisions are, are made, and they haven't been getting talked about for 15 years. So we've got an awful lot of discretionary, and I, I think we've got all of our data. We can keep it, we can table it, put it on the shelf. My esteemed colleague White is absolutely correct. One day, the city of College Station will have a huge, nice, well-appointed rec center. I just don't think now is that time. Thank you, Mayor.
Favor.
So, yeah, first of all, on the 455 responses on a survey like this, they can absolutely be statistically valid, they can absolutely represent the population, there's no question about that. So let's get that off the table. It's been done in social science research for, you know, 100 years, and it's been proven to be true. So I'm not, I'm not worried about that. I haven't seen the way this work was actually done. I haven't actually seen the representation they're talking about, so I'm not gonna say this is in a fact a case, but it can be done, so. Secondly, I would, I just wanna say I would be in favor of moving forward. I do think it's the, the right thing to do, and to Bob's point, let's see if, let's see if College Station citizens want it. I mean, let's put it to the vote. Let's put it, let's see if we can get it on a bond election, if the bond committee goes for it and wants to get it on there, given the leeway they've got, and then the voters can say yea or nay. I would like to see something come back to us with, keep the committee engaged. This was pointed out, they only met once, and maybe they could have another shot at really talking about what they feel is appropriate. I kind of, like I said before, I'm on the aquatics fence a little bit, so maybe something with and without aquatics, something that does some of the things that, that Trey talked about when he came up. I think, you know, that would be, that would be worth seeing, in my opinion, and then we can make some decisions about what it looks like to go on, onto the voters if we decide to do that. Thanks.
Okay. I think I've already had a little bit of my say, but with a general view up here, I'm certainly in favor of moving it forward, whatever that entails. And I think you've heard some ideas about that, much tighter scoping, some serious discussion about aquatics because that is a big expense item in there and, and how much of that you do, and, and whether or not you could partner with somebody else on some aspects of that. I think that's still an open question. As was mentioned by one of my colleagues here, we've been talking about this for 10 or 15 years. I absolutely am not in favor of bundling up the data and putting it on the shelf for another 10 or 15 years. I think we need to get to the point where, where we hear from the citizens directly to us individually and ultimately through a, a bond issue proposal, if in fact that makes the most sense about financing it, and I still think some work needs to be done on how we finance it and where the, uh, uh, funding would come for the capital cost side of it. I am cognizant of the fact that pro forma, which is, nobody's really talked a whole lot about the outcome of that pro forma, but it includes a substantial subsidy if in fact those numbers are correct. And if it's less than 6,500 the first couple of years, your, your operating costs are still gonna be there, your personnel are still gonna be there, maybe you get by with the less, less temporary or part-time staff, but you may actually wind up subsidizing a little bit more the first two or three years than you would by the fourth or fifth year. So city management's always concerned, and this council's always concerned about the O&amp;M that we're facing, and this is just another O&amp;M expenditure that, based on that pro forma, what was it, 98% or 88%? I can't remember.
98%.
98%, you're still at $300,000 or $400,000 a year in, in some years, correct? Or am I, I don't have it in front of me.
The delta was about $87,000 in, each year, so the subsidy would be about $87,000.
Yeah, well, I guess maybe I'm a little skeptical of 98%. I'm, I'm more like the 88% one, and I, I did look at that, that thing, and I think you need to, you need to hope for the 98%, but you ought to plan that if you don't make that, you better know where your revenue for O&amp;M is gonna come from, and that's gonna be another part of the discussion down the road. And as you tighten up the scoping, certainly without aquatics in there, you, you may lose some of your membership-
Absolutely.
-potential, but you will have, maybe what you lose in membership, you won't lose as much in term, in terms of overall revenue, so, I mean, net revenue, I should say. So I think that a lot of, a lot of fleshing out is needed, but I really don't, do not wanna see us just bundle this up and put it on the shelf because we don't think we can do it. Keep in mind, we're talking about two or three years from now at the earliest, and because if it does go in a general bond, I don't see that happening personally before 2027, which is two years from this November. We gotta make a decision that summer of 2027, that, the council then will have to make a decision whether they put it on, and in previous to that, of course, we'd have the, the bond advisory committee, because we'll have other items that the city, I think 2027 is sort of thought to be the end of the last five-year bond forecast, so we may have more streets, we may have some drainage, we may have some park, park, other park aspects that need to be addressed and so forth. So I think, I don't, I don't, I think we got time to do the narrowing down, the scoping, get the feedback, bring in a consultant if you need him, and I would say carry on a dialogue with YMCA. Frankly, council members ought to make those tours and look at facility, whether it's a YMCA facility or just a, 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 a city-owned, city-operated facility, your staff could organize a, a trip and get at least three or four of the council members to take a, one or two-day trip to see some of those facilities, or maybe make two trips and do different directions, west and east or something. Anyway, that's where I stand on it, and I, I sort of think there's a consensus up here that we should move this to the next stage, that I think I've heard a number of people say, not everybody, not everybody, but I think more than four have said that we need to work towards a rec center or at least offer it to the citizens and see where they stand, but we gotta have a lot more detail in order for that, that to happen. Any other comments for a direction to staff? Okay. Mr. City Manager, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I think that's what we're looking for. So basically, I think we'll, we'll have it with the intent of having it prepped for consideration from a bond committee, TBD.
Very good. Thank you very much, and thank you to the Mary Dunn folks for being here and helping us to understand the, not only earlier part of the study, but the pro forma part as well and, and answer the questions that council had. Ms. Hayden, thank you for your work, and I hope that committee is ready to work. I, I'd like to see them meet more than one more time, too. Thank you very much. We bring, that brings us to item 8.2, Mr. Jeremiah Cook. Presentation, discussion, possible action regarding destination, wayfinding signage in College Station. Mr. Cook.
Yeah, Jeremiah Cook, Assistant Director Tourism. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to dive in a little bit on destination wayfinding. I'm gonna go to this first slide, maybe. Hey. So this is the destination wayfinding signs that we're talking about tonight. I wanna talk a little bit about how we got here and then where we're at currently, and then some future options that we'll look for direction from council on. So in 2008, the Bryan College Station Convention and Visitors Bureau launched a destination wayfinding initiative, and that was about signage throughout the entire area in Brazos County, and it wasn't just the vehicular signs that you see, but it also included some pedestrian signage in places like North Gate and Downtown Bryan with a vision of pairing that wayfinding signing, signage with Texas A&amp;M as well. So by 2012, they began installing the signs that you see on these photos, not just specific wayfinding, specific locations, but there's the now-entering signs that you'll find in Bryan as well as in College Station. It was done in two phases, and so the first phase was places like the Bush Library and Texas A&amp;M, and the second phase was much more far-reaching. They actually put out where you could pay a, a small amount of money to have some locations included on that wayfinding second phase. And so that was places like Central Park, Veterans Park, the Museum of the American GI, Santa's Wonderland, amongst others. These are some of the current pictures that you can see on your screen of what they look like. This one that I put up here is actually kind of interesting from the Arts Center because it looks like a wayfinding sign, but in fact, when the Arts Center opened, they wanted to be included in the signage, and so they actually pay their own rental fee for this sign, although it looks like the other 68 signs in the community. So kind of a varying degrees of signage throughout. So when we talk about where we're at now, if we can go to the next slide, these two pictures kind of encapsulate the state, current state of the signage. The pedestrian signage in North Gate and Downtown Bryan was deeded to the city immediately when it was installed, so as the Bryan College Station Convention and Visitors Bureau installed that signage, it was immediately deeded to the city. In, the vehicular signage, however, actually stayed under the ownership of the Bryan College Station Convention and Visitors Bureau, eventually would become experienced Bryan College Station until the dissolution in 2020. So in 2020, during that dissolution, these signs actually became property of the city. It's really only important because we did pay for them in the beginning. This was a split cost between the city of Bryan and the city of College Station, but they did not become our actual responsibility for upkeep and those kinds of things until 2020. There was a five-year maintenance agreement that was written into place when the signs were put up, and that maintenance agreement expired in 2018. Currently, the upkeep of the signs is rather outside the scope of what our public works folks are able to do. The signs are very large, are much larger than the other things that we deal with. And so the current policy is that if one falls or if one is, is in, is hit in bad shape, then our public works folks go out and retrieve it, but there is not a, a mechanism at the current time to say, we wanna put a new sign up, or maybe a visitor center has moved and we want new directional to that. We don't currently have- center has moved and we want new directional to that. We don't currently have that process in place. So we go to the next slide. This is the 68 signs that are currently in our community. You can see that they're along major roadways, University, Texas, and Highway 6. They're at most of the off-ramps as you're exiting Highway 6. And they're pointing you to major places throughout the community. I included this slide in here. This is a, it's where overnight visitors went over the last year, and this is cellphone data. And so it's a cellphone data that we have access to that shows us some of the POIs that people are visiting throughout our community. And really, kind of what I want to show here is that we know that overnight visitors are visiting different places throughout our community. It's not shocking that A&amp;M would be far and above every other place here in town. But a lot of these locations, both in Bryan and in College Station, are places that you would find on our current wayfinding signage. I know that as soon as I put this slide up here, the Buc-E's at 290 is where our eyes go. But every time we run any tourism reports, the Buc-E's 290 is generally on there. So, but when you look at it, you see there's places like Northgate and downtown Bryan. There's places like Santa's Wonderland, the Brazos County Expo, like the Hilton and the Stella. So it truly is that when people are coming and they're staying here in College Station, they're visiting both Bryan and College Station. Some quick examples of some current wayfinding options that are out there. The ones on the left-hand side are from McKinney, Texas, where they've just undergone a wayfinding project. And you can see that the current process is less about big signs that have a lot of writing on them, more about these individualized signs that you can change in and out that maybe if a place closes or if there's all of a sudden going to be a road closed for a year and you need to change some directional. These types of signs are a lot easier to work with. The other thing I'll say about these signs is that there's pedestrian, which you see the smaller side, smaller on the right side, and then vehicular as well. And so when you look at these types of projects, the intent would be that we would be talking about the entire destination and how we, how the signage flows. So there would be signage in Northgate that would look like Northgate signage. I know that Northgate wayfinding has been a discussion that we've had a significant amount over the years. They would look like Northgate, but they would also tie into the overall destination brand. Maybe other districts, as we continue to evaluate districts such as Wolfpen Creek, would have their own signage that would tie into this, but then would have the flair of whatever that district is. So as I wrap up here, just some options for, for council to consider. A new signage program would allow us to get a refresh, to get those signs that maybe we're not so proud of off the, the roadways and get them replaced with some things that we really want. They enhance the visitor experience. They strengthen the city's brand, and they encourage exploration. You know, a lot of times people ask me over the last few months as we've been exploring this, are wayfinding signs really that important? I have Google Maps now. My phone tells me where I'm going. Do we really need this? But I think in a town like ours, sometimes people come here very often without understanding all the assets that we do have here. And that's an option that wayfinding brings to the front table, is that wayfinding allows us to let people know, hey, you may have not known that the Bush Library was here. And if you didn't come in from that side of town, you now start to see that on signs throughout the community and start to point in that direction. Or maybe you didn't know about the Museum of the American GI or what all was going on at Veterans Park. So that's some of the benefits, just some options that our team has discussed as we were preparing for this. One is that we just remove all wayfinding and directional signage. So that could be an option that council gives us direction on. We, in talking with our Public Works team, we would need to go out to, to bring someone in to help with that just because of the sheer size of these. So it wouldn't be that tomorrow we could just send crews out and, and all the signs are pulled down. The other option is that we repair an existing and develop a maintenance plan and a budget going forward for exactly how we're going to maintain these. Is it that we're getting a, an outside agency, such as the one that did it the first time, to come in and maintain them? And how do we continue to fund that moving forward? And then the last step that we put on here is actually creating a joint committee with multiple stakeholders that are involved in this process. And so this would be a committee that we could work with the City of Bryan on, with Destination Bryan, as well as the Tourism Committee amongst others, to really bring all the stakeholders to the table and get some recommendations from them to bring back to council as to what the stakeholders would like to see. Tonight, Courtney Phillips was supposed to be here, but she was unable to make it. She is the Chair of the Tourism Committee. I did want to let you all know that we brought this to the Tourism Committee at our July 30th meeting. And the minutes, record it like this, which I think is best since she's not here, to speak on their behalf. The committee supported further study and recommended coordination with the City of Bryan and Texas A&amp;M University to ensure cohesive signage and cost efficiency. The last thing I'll say on this, and then I will obviously turn it over for any questions, is when we did this project in 2012, combined, the cost was $400,000 between the two cities. We have counterparts across the state right now that are doing these projects starting from scratch, and those projects are over a million dollars at this point. Now, I will say that it is, it's a hot eligible expense. And the other point that I'll make is that we have concrete in the ground, we have poles out there, which could reduce the cost in a lot of different ways. So we don't have exact costs because we don't have exact direction, but just kind of wanted to give those parameters as we do wrap up. I'll answer any questions.
Useful parameters, and thank you for the presentation. I think we get some feedback from council. I will start with Mr. Schaefer, and we'll work this way across, asking questions, clarification, and providing any insights they may, may have or wish you to consider. Mr. Schaefer.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think I have any questions, Mayor, but I, I do appreciate good wayfinding signage. And I do think it's complimentary to all the technology that we have today. You know, not to go on too long about this, but I think most of us know that when we rely completely on our phones or our GPSs in our cars or whatever, it'll take us the wrong way or get us into trouble periodically. And it doesn't do what you just mentioned, Jeremiah. It doesn't really give us unique features about a place unless we're really looking for them. So I think, I think there's a lot to be said for wayfinding signage that, that does exactly what you pointed out, kind of creates, could potentially create districts within our community. And we'll go to the Northgate District since we've been talking about that, Wolfpen. You mentioned that as well. And I think, you know, Northgate to me is a great example because I'm not sure, I don't look at this community through signs because I've been living here so long. But, but I think we heard from the people that there weren't, there wasn't good signage on how to get to the garage, for example, you know, just things that, that maybe, and maybe that contributes to its somewhat less than optimal use sometimes. I don't know. The other thing I think is important with this, and we, you know, I guess if there's a committee, if we go forward this and it's talked about, is that maps for pedestrians and, you know, microtransport, that kind of thing in places like Northgate and Wolfpen are important, too. The map, not, you know, not to get on a soapbox here, but the map at Northgate right now at the end of the promenade is really bad. It is totally unlegible and understandable, and, and it would confuse the person more than it would help them. So, you know, there's, there are things like that that can really enhance the experience in a place of visitors if done well. And so I guess I'll stop by saying, I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of this effort, and I, I'm glad the Tourism Committee felt that way. And I think I, I would certainly agree with the sort of general recommendation that they've made at this point. Thanks.
Mr. Yancey.
I don't have any questions. Great presentation. I'd follow the Tourism Committee's recommendation pursuant to utilizing the concrete footings that are already in the ground to save money. I think signs are important. Wayfinding is important. You have a lot of, you know, older generations that come here, you know, including my mom, to watch sporting events or, or, you know, meet us wherever. And, you know, they don't do everything with this. You might put some QXR codes on them so that people going by can, or that might be a safety issue. I don't know. But.
You can take it if you hold your phone.
If you're talking on it.
No, you're holding it.
Oh, really?
No.
I, I haven't got one yet.
I have.
Anyway, that's my feedback. Thank you.
So we do a lot of talking about a sense of place and defining the area you're in. So with all due respect to our neighbor to the north, why don't we do our own thing? That's a legit question.
Yeah, I would say that from, from our perspective, visitors don't generally see the lines when they're here. And so that's, that's the consistent feedback we hear, is that visitors are not saying, I'm here to visit College Station and College Station only. They're, they're cross, you know, they're going cross. And a lot of times that's due to, you know, the fact that there may be an asset in Bryan that, that we don't have or vice versa. I think Messina Hall's a great example of that, which is on the wayfinding signage as well. If you're coming to College Station, you're looking for a winery that's being recognized across the state, then we don't have that on, in College Station, so they would go to Bryan for that. And so I think that that's one of those areas where visitors don't oftentimes see that line, and that's why they're crossing back and forth. So that's why I would say the, the, the signage being in both cities makes sense.
So are you saying that the cities would get together, along with university, come up with a plan, and everybody do the same thing?
It could be that way. If you look at the current signage, the way that they delineated at that time was the circles at the top. If the circle on the top is red, it says College Station with the red star in the middle. If it's blue, then it's a City of Bryan sign. And then there's maroon ones that are Texas A&amp;M. So there was that different branding for each side was kind of how that was done in the past.
I'm, I mean, I'm not opposed to it, but we talk a lot about creating our identity, and it seems that was not necessarily along that same path. I have noticed, like the pictures you showed, that, that the current signs are a little bit dilapidated. I do appreciate that they're there. I do notice them. I do see them. Like Scott, I'm kind of blind to a lot of them because having lived here so long. Absolutely like the idea of being able to change out smaller components of the sign to, to indicate a change in amenity or a change in traffic direction, whatever you need to do. And I like the idea, like Yancey said, of using the existing infrastructure we have if possible. But if we're going to do it, let's, let's do it right. And let's, I would say collaborate, but don't wait.
Very good alliterative comment. Mr. White, can you match that?
Thank you. I, I agree with everything that's been said. And on your current slide, I think your second bullet under benefits is the most important. I think it identifies that brand. And I, and I think that's real important. We've all lived in this city for a long, long time, but we still notice them. We still notice them. And I, and I, I think current, I love your, your slides of whatever city that McKinney, you know, I think those are really nice. It just gives a, a perspective of what you're, what cities you're coming into. So I think, I think, I feel very strongly that we need that brand. But I, what Melissa said really caught my attention. Why can't we do it ourselves? You know what I'm saying? I mean, you know, I want to, we want to be partners with A&amp;M. We want to be partners with Bryan. But let's, let's, we don't want to have the same brand identity.
Right.
We want to have our separate identity. So I would agree with it. I would not want this to be talked about 12 months from now because this is, to me, an easy, easy fix and easy win for us. So I would definitely move forward with it as quickly as we can.
Mr. White?
Thank you. I think I was the one that maybe asked about this. I don't remember. So I'm excited that it's here. I'm going to speak very romantically about wayfinding signs. I imagine yourself, right? You're, you're in the car, you're driving, you're in a city that you haven't been to before, a city that you only visit every once in a while. And you're about, you've reached almost your destination, your map's saying, oh, you're going to take a right. And you start to see the little signages from the city places. Oh, if you take a right here, you're going to be at the Gaylord Hotel and the golf course that you're going to play at. And it's like, it gives you a sense that you've arrived somewhere. I love that feeling. I love when you get to a downtown and like those signs are up and you're like, oh, you know, the Mob Museum's over here, or this or that's over here, you know, that's Vegas. But you know, it's like, I love that. And I think that it does give a sense of identity to a city. I hate the current signs. I think they are bland and boring, and they feel like they were thrown up in a way of utility, other, and no other function. And, and that's okay. I want to move towards something that is romantic. I want to move, move towards something that, I don't remember who exactly touched on it, I'm sorry, that designates districts. So I really, from my perspective, I'd really like to lean into something that's akin to what you showed with the McKinney that can be changed out. I'd like to start maybe in one section. I want to say, we want a signage in Northgate and really hammer down what we want this to look like and give that Northgate identity. Because then we can take that, we can move, okay, we're in the Wolfpen Creek area. They're going to be similar, but they're going to have their own unique thing. Maybe the Wolfpen ones have wolves on them. Maybe the Northgate ones have bottle caps, right? Just something that gives a unique district flair to each part of the city. That's something I really think is, is important going forward for the City of College Station, is to kind of identify our unique areas. And I think this is a first step towards that, no different than the proposed midtown signs, right? Give a sense of identity to the place. So that's where I obviously am randomly very passionate about this. But I think it's important, and I would like to see us maybe start small and learn a lot, and then branch out to other parts of the city. So I would suggest the McKinney style signs, that sort of general thing coming back with a focus on starting in, in the Northgate area. And not really involve anybody else. I'd rather like to see this be our thing.
Mr. Smith?
That's interesting. I, I mean, I thought the McKinney-looking signs looked great, too, but I also know that that's the one with the million-dollar price tag. And I don't know that we can, that I want to do that for that much. So, so I, I get where, why you like it, but I also like the making use of the existing infrastructure and improving on it, if, finding a way to, to make use of that and, and get it better. I was Director of Public Works when the first ones went up. I was opposed to them. And I was opposed to them because I could foresee the O and M cost, and none was allowed, allotted for in the project. There was a five-year maintenance contract, so I thought, okay, so I retired before it ended. Because I could see this coming. And you can see those signs, look, the weather, I mean, you know, it doesn't have to be hit by a car to look bad. It's just, they, they, they get old. So if we do this, let's do it right. Let's budget for it. Let's budget the O and M cost for it. Make it, make it be right. I mean, the, you know, the, the little sign replacement crew that, that we've got in Public Works is more than a full-time job. And adding, how many, what, how many was it? 60 something?
68.
Yeah. Adding, adding that many to it is, is a lot of work. It's a whole lot. So I'm for doing it. I would like to find us, use repair existing and develop maintenance and plan and budget. That, that bullet right there was, yay, I'm in favor of that one. But if we're going to do this, we have to keep it looking good. That's, that's an absolute must.
Can hot funds be used to maintain as well as implement? Yes?
Yeah, wayfinding is specifically one of the nine categories. Wayfinding is actually one that's actually called out within the.
Do you feel better, Mark?
Well, yeah, but, but it's got to get into the budget.
Budget.
And it has to be actually happening.
Thanks, sir. My thoughts are expressed by many up here, but I, I am, I love the romantic version here. And frankly, wayfinding signs aren't because you're going to go to that place. You see that that place is here and you say, man, I haven't got time today. But I didn't know this community actually offered the Veterans Memorial area or the, the American GI Museum or whatever it is when you're driving by. So to me, I think wayfinding signs are absolutely necessary. I, I frankly was around, I think maybe I'm planning and zoning at the time that was, or even Parks Board when it was discussed back in, back in your day. I don't find the current signs to be all that bad myself. Yeah, there's, they need some correction. They need some updating, need some movement forward. I think I do agree that there needs to be a, a budget for maintenance, O and M. I do agree that there needs to be a budget for maintenance, O&amp;M, once you figure out how you're gonna get it done. I am very strong in believing you've got to include the larger community. Two cities, one community. I think people that come and stay in College Station are interested in downtown Bryan. And go for it. That is an attraction. But they may be staying in College Station, probably are. Having a downtown Bryan, having Messina Hoff, having maybe the Legends Events Center, whatever they got over there. Directing them to it doesn't negatively affect me at all. I understand the general argument about having kind of a unique identity. But I just think if we try to do this, this is a College Station thing by gosh, and not think about how the larger community interacts, as you have already said, people come here for a lot of different things. And I think it'd be inappropriate for us not to think about how we integrate with the larger community, particularly Texas A&amp;M, but I would say City of Bryan and the surrounding area to the extent that maybe there's a winery or two down in Peach Creek. And there's a few things out in the county that aren't in either of the cities that ought to be considered in this. So Mr. Smith's laughing down there, but anyway. I do appreciate the romantic nature of this in that sense that it's really an option value. People see the sign. They don't necessarily want to go there right now, but it just helps them understand there are lots of things in this community that they hadn't thought about when they came here for the one or two things they were looking for. Anyway, I think you can move forward pretty quickly on this. Tourism committee absolutely needs to be involved. But if you need a joint committee, you take two or three people off the tourism committee and one or two staff members and two or three from City of Bryan. And maybe, oh, you got some on the tourism committee from the university, but you need to figure out how you're gonna integrate that. They've got their own signage language. They are an island to themselves. They have their own sign rules about buildings, and it changes about every decade. And if you drive across campus, you can see different eras of signs on the campus about not wayfinding so much, but just labeling buildings. So I think there's a lot of things you gotta work out. But I'd say, we need wayfinding signs. Go for it. And bring us back, I think, to budget. I think if you can streamline what we got, use as much of the infrastructure as you can. An O&amp;M budget out of hot funds of a couple hundred thousand dollars doesn't bother me a lot if that is what is needed. But I agree with everybody that you do need to maintain them if you're gonna keep them, have them, or if you're gonna have anything. All right, any other comments? Does that provide enough direction, you think? I'm looking at you, Mr. Crook, but you're looking at your economic development chairman and city manager?
Yes, I think we're good.
You're good. Okay, very good. Let's move on then. Gentlemen, do you need a break? Ladies, gentlemen, we've got four items. I think I'm gonna take about a five-minute break if we can. And then we'll call, we're going on to the regular agenda. We'll start with 9.1. We have returned from recess. We're moving to item 9.1, which is a public hearing, presentation, discussion, possible action on the City of College Station 2026 advertised ad valorem tax rate of 0.511872 per hundred-dollar valuation, resulting in increased tax revenues. Also, discussion and possible action announcing the meeting date, time, and place to adopt tax rate. Ms. Mary Ellen Leonard is going to make the presentation and lead us through this next three or four items. The floor is yours, Ms. Leonard.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
By the way, I do have one speaker for this item. It's a public hearing when we get to it.
Okay. So Mayor and Council, the last time I was up here, we were talking about what rate you should call the tax rate at. And if you recall, about two weeks ago, I told you that currently, under the law and how we have to calculate the no new revenue and the voter approval rate, there was a three-and-a-half percent cap that got us to the voter approval rate. I also explained to you that at that point in time, the Senate, the State Senate in special session, had put Senate Bill 10 out and had voted to approve that that cap for next year would be two-and-a-half percent. So in the PBS Schoolhouse Rock version of How a Bill Becomes Law, the one House voted on it. It went to the other House. The other House put an amendment on it. That amendment happened earlier this week. That amendment reduced the rate to 1%, but had a public safety carve-out. So that amendment passed the House, and the House and the Senate versions were then different. So they formed a committee. That committee was formed yesterday. And 10 people, I believe, five from the House and five from the Senate, decided today that they would agree on the two-and-a-half percent reduction bill. So the next step is that it will go to the governor to be signed. So that will be the cap on the voter approval rate next year. As we stand here right now, this all happened at about 5:00 today.
No, that has to go back to each House to vote on.
Yes, and then...
Before goes the governor.
Goes to the governor.
Assuming that both Houses agreed to the conference committee report.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, but at this point, given the fact that they formed the committee yesterday, both of them agreed today by 5:00. It's moving very quickly that the two-and-a-half percent voter cap on the voter approval rate is probably what the cities will end up seeing as of right now. Now, I have been up here three times now and have told you three different things. So my crystal ball is clearly not very good this year. But with that being said, we did call the public hearing for what is the voter approval rate. The slide that is in front of you right now shows the debt rate and the O&amp;M rate at the voter approval rate. The debt rate is set. That is what it has to be, and that won't be changed regardless of what decision that y'all make when we get to that part in this process. I also have up on this slide the no new revenue rate, which is the lowest rate that it would be to generate the same amount of revenue as last year. And then the voter approval rate, which is what we called the public hearing at. So with that, Mayor, you said that we have people who would like to speak, and if you would open the public hearing?
Yes, I hereby open the public hearing. For those who wish to speak, I have one person signed up, Mr. Valen Cpeck, if you'd like to come forward. This is the public hearing.
Sure. Again, thank you, Council, for the opportunity to speak. You know, the number obviously has changed, and from the jump from 47 to where it was now, obviously a big difference. What my point is tonight on the public hearing is your no new revenue being at 49, and you being, going all the way up to the voter, which is the 51, is why not come down to the 50 mark, right? And if you go all the way up to the 51.9 or .3, what is the citizen getting for that extra bump? Right? Are we gonna actually work on lowering impact fees? Or is there gonna be something on the other end of that, that we bumped this up, and they benefit from it to some degree? I understand we need to fund things, and that's why I don't think the, you know, no new revenue is the right number. But adding such a big gap, what is the citizen getting out of that? When you have citizens who are picking and choosing which checks to pay and which bills to pay, any dollar matters. And I know this isn't a significant amount of money, and it's less than a hundred dollars per household across the city. I understand that. However, there are people who are picking which bills to pay this month. And so when we're looking at an increase, even though it just being a penny over something else, it does matter, and it affects people. And so the question I pose in front of you is, if you're gonna go all the way up to the voter approval line, what is the citizen getting in return for that? If you know no new revenue is gonna fund the things you need funded, and our first responders and our firefighters and stuff like that have what they need, why go all the way up to the voter approval line? And if I'm missing something, please correct me. But I mean, that's the thing. What is the citizen getting out of you raising it all the way up to the voter approval line?
Thank you, sir. I'll answer that question when we finish the public hearing. At least, I'll give my answer to it. The public hearing is still open. Seeing anybody else who wishes to speak to us. Nobody else has signed up. So I will close the public hearing and just indicate one or two. May I answer his questions? One of the most important things the city is getting compared to the no new revenue rate. No new revenue rate doesn't generate any revenue to cover inflationary costs during the year. So no new revenue except for those new items that are on the tax roll. But the bulk of the tax roll, you get zero increase, so you can't cover inflation. And that certainly is a big problem for the city. To me, that's why you don't adopt the no new revenue rate very often unless you really got a lot of other sources of income. And I think property tax is certainly big. The other thing that's really looming over us that what we're trying to do is triangulate so we get to next year and the year after, we are looking at at least a million-dollar loss, assuming the, what is the constitutional amendment regarding personal property exemption up to 125,000. That's gonna cost, I heard, as high as 1.3 million. It may not be quite that high, but very high probability that that will pass the general voters in the state of Texas. So we've got to account for that next year. So by us looking somewhere in that area near the voter approval rate, we're looking ahead to what we've got to cover for next year, which we already know. Leaving aside the future of the roadway impact fee, which is another consideration, as well as what do you really think's gonna happen to the economy and sales tax revenue, which has been flattening the last year, and that may stay flat. Nobody really knows. So we got a number of things to consider, is all I'm saying. That's why we're looking at, why we advertised it at that rate. And there were some other numbers discussed as well. But that's just my view. So, Mary Ellen, we don't need to vote on anything here, right?
Not yet. At this time, you can close the public hearing.
I did close the public hearing.
We can go to the next agenda item.
Okay, I closed the public hearing and responded to the question the best I could. And we'll move on to item 9.2, which is a presentation, discussion, possible action on the ordinance adopting the City of College Station 2025-2026 budget and presentation, discussion, possible action ratifying the property tax revenue increase reflected in the budget. There will be two separate motions associated with this. So I'll let Ms. Leonard proceed with the presentation.
So this is the FY26 budget adoption. This will be where Council would vote yes or no on the FY26 budget as proposed. There are no changes to the FY26 budget as proposed that we presented to you on July 7. The changes that Council requested are able to be handled out of the contingency budget that was included in those numbers. So we have no change to the overall net expenditures. As a reminder, the amount of that budget that was presented to you was $474,225,698. And as the mayor mentioned, in order to adopt the budget, we need two separate motions, both of which are on your screen. So Council, if you would like to discuss the budget, I'm here for any questions.
Any questions on the budget, which we've reviewed, and she summarized in very, very large lumps there. Any other questions on the budget?
Wouldn't any changes to the budget necessitate a change to the tax rate? How do you move on one without talking about the other?
Well, that would lead to the other. So my real question is, we've had budget hearings. We've had budget workshops. What she's reflecting is what she heard from all of us in the last, what was it, month or so ago?
Yeah, and the process of what has to be voted on and adopted is also in the legal statutes. So we are required to go through and adopt the budget before you adopt the tax rate.
Right. But we have basically had each had a chance to amend the budget the last time we considered a budget. So this, and you incorporated what we agreed to.
Correct.
And there were just a few things that we talked about, you've already incorporated as the council directed and voted on.
Just to be clear, Mayor, if the council chose to change something right now, it would just have to, in order to cause an impact to the tax rate, it would just have to be to the point that we didn't believe that the tax rate would cover what you're doing. And/or, I would say, so if you're talking about minor items or something got changed, then it'd be kind of a similar conversation as what we had before. And then also, although it wouldn't be tonight, just a reminder that this is essentially what we do anytime we amend the budget, even after you've adopted it. So it would be a similar thing. So if it was something complex, that could become a challenge. But you could change something tonight as long as it wasn't so material that it would cause a disruption.
But we advertised this budget.
Yes, you did. I mean, but again, and I'm not saying anybody is, but part of the reason you have this hearing is that you have the ability, until you adopt it, to change it.
Okay, is that an answer sufficient for the council members to follow on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hearing nothing further, the chair will entertain a motion on the first item. And make the motion, read the motion.
I make the following motion on the ordinance as it appears on the dais. I move to approve the proposed FY26 budget.
No, no, we need the first one. You want those, first one or second one?
The first one. I make the following motion on the ordinance as it appears on the dais. I move to approve.
That's the one I was...
Okay, I'm sorry.
I move to approve the proposed FY26 budget for the City of College Station for a total proposed budget with revisions
Okay, do I hear a second? Second from Mr. Schaefer, motion made by Mr. Smith. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, do you want to vote of record?
Yes, please.
Vote of record on this one?
Yes, please.
So we'll start from place one. Raise your hand and say aye or nay.
Aye.
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 So you have a vote of record. All seven members voted aye in adopting that first motion. The chair will take a motion on the second item.
I'll do it. I'll make this motion. I make the following motion on the ordinance as it appears on the dais. I move to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the FY26 budget.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
A second, but a motion made by Mr. Wright, second by Mr. Smith. Okay, any further discussion on that motion?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to point something out, if I may.
Please, sir.
When we picked the 51.18, there was significant discussion around the fact that it was a placeholder. We were gonna talk about it. We were gonna talk about the tax rate. And yet here we are, just kind of steamrolling through, and so I just want to point that out.
It's a good question. I never quite understood the legal sequence of these things, but we'll ask Ms. Leonard.
I don't understand the legal sequence of these things either. And every year, you can ask Kirsten, I put them in your agenda the other way around, and we gotta flip them. So the property tax increase that is reflected in the budget has to do with the valuation times whatever rate. That number will be higher than last year. That's what it's referring to. The wording is state law, that this has to be the wording, and this has to be the order. And I don't know what to say other than it is just basic math of the valuation times whatever rate is gonna be higher.
But I take his point. So we've got another item that comes up next.
Yeah, to be clear, you're not adopting the tax rate until 9.3.
This is, we have new value that goes on the tax roll that is gonna increase the revenue. Yes.
Okay.
This is, yeah.
That's perfect. Thank you.
But it is worth pointing that out, because I agree, it's confusing when we look at this in that the rate that we're, even the... It's confusing when we look at this in that the rate that we're even the the voter approval rate, if we adopt that tonight, it's actually a reduction in rate over what we had last year.
Exactly. Even if you adopt the voter approval rate, it's a reduction in the rate, but it is an increase in the revenue because we had over four hundred million dollars of new valuation come onto the tax roll. So take four hundred million, divide it by a hundred and multiply it. But whatever rate you choose, and that will be an increase.
Agreed. I think it's just helpful with the people watching or listening to understand that we're actually going to have a lower rate, even though we're getting more money.
Right.
But but it's also important to point out that but for that fifty one point one eight number, that's that's baked in this second motion, right?
No, that it's not.
Just to be clear on the way this is done, when council called the fifty one point one eight, that's why that's there. Council can set that rate at whatever you make a motion at.
So the law is basically requiring us to adopt something before we've actually had discussion?
No, no, it's I understand that it's confusing the way it's said, but you are you are effectively in nine point two adopting a budget and saying you're going to fund it. In nine point three, you are adopting a tax rate. So that that is where you do it. And you can vote for one and not the other. You can vote for one and change the other. There are two different things.
And this is legally required language?
Yes.
And and if I can, if I can also put my two cents in as well. Let's say, let's say the so currently the council has approved this budget at where it is. If the on the next item, if the tax rate was adopted at the no new revenue rate and that's what the council chose to do, we would need to come back and amend the budget down so that that budget would fit within the revenue stream that we would have at that point, if that was what the council wanted to do.
But this budget of four seventy four, two twenty five, six ninety eight is is encapsulated in something below fifty one point one eight? Or I mean, you had to take into account receipts before you could give us the recommended budget, which we only slightly amended.
Well, yes, and the tax rate has has essentially moved as we got the information from the appraisal district and from the tax office.
Right.
Where we then true those true those things up.
Okay, all righty. Thank you. That's pretty much clear.
Really? I'm glad you've got it.
Unfortunately, it is it is hard to follow. And we don't always have this discussion, but routinely we do because of the way it's worded. And again, it has to it comes back to if there was a fundamental change in the tax rate at this point, then you would need to go back and adjust the budget accordingly.
Are our staff aware of the tax rate that we will discuss next? What number do what's the floor at which a budget of four hundred and seventy four million, two hundred and twenty five thousand, six hundred and ninety eight dollars can no longer be made whole?
Yeah, if you remember the last time we presented, we I believe the number that we presented that was basically if you want the budget as presented with no, it was forty nine point seven four. At that time, I recommended, from a strategic perspective, fifty point seven four. And then came back when we had the the two and a half percent cap and said, then I recommended you go all the way to the voter approval of fifty one, one, eight, seven, two.
I think I think we can have this discussion on the next motion.
Okay.
But but yes, we can tell you that.
Pin that down a little bit closer.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll save my question till the next agenda item.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor and a second to for the second item that's on there. Move to ratify the property tax increase reflected in FY twenty six budget. So the ordinance appears on the dais. And so you've made that motion. We got a second. Do you want to record vote on this one?
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll start with place one again, make it easy. Raise your hand, say aye or nay.
Aye.
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 Okay, we have a seven, zero unanimous vote on the second motion, which brings us to item nine point three, which again is a presentation discussion and possible action on approval of an ordinance adopting the city of College Station twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six adverrum tax rate of zero point five, one, one, eight, seven, two per hundred dollar assessed valuation, with the debt service portion being point zero point two, zero, two, six, six, eight per hundred dollar assessed valuation. And the operations maintenance portion being zero point three, zero, nine, two, zero, four per hundred dollar assessed valuation. Ms. Leonard, explain what we're doing here. And I see you've got a motion that we need. We need two motions here as well, but go ahead.
This is one big motion, not not two motions. It's one big motion. And this is your opportunity to discuss and decide what the tax rate will be. So this is the same slide that we just saw in the public hearing. I have separated out the debt and the O and M rate based off of what we called the public hearing at. The debt rate cannot change. It will be twenty point two, six, six, eight per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation. The no new revenue rate and the voter approval rate were provided by the Brazos County Tax Office.
Okay, can I ask you a question?
You can. I am here for whatever questions you would like me to answer.
Before we get to the motion, I think in light of the questions that just came up, if we wanted the overall tax rate to be fifty point zero, seven, four cents per hundred, all of that difference would come out of the O and M rate, correct?
Correct. All of the difference needs to come out of the O and M rate.
Which would be maybe a half cent, what a fifty forty eight or fifty point seven, four. And I'm I'm using that number simply because.
About forty point four, four.
Okay, point four, four would so we take about point four, four off the thirty point nine, two, oh, four. Okay. And the reason I'm asking about that specific number is that that still helps us think through the million dollar plus loss we likely to have with respect to the property tax change in terms of the exemption. But it also helps us position ourselves a little bit relative to the two and a half percent, which we're operating on the fact that we believe we're going to have two and a half percent. We don't believe we're at all going to have one percent increase. So I think when when that was suggested to us by city manager, that's sort of what we were looking at possibly doing. I was just asking so I have a so all of us have some sense of what the difference would be.
Yeah, I I just for clarity's sake and maybe to help with y'all's thought process a little bit. One cent on the tax rate generates somewhere right now between one point two and one point three million dollars. So that is one full cent on the tax rate.
We're taking a half cent off or four, four tenths of a cent.
To be clear, Mayor, I want to make sure that I'm clear. My recommendation is that you adopt the voter approval rate of fifty one, one, eight, seven, two.
Okay, that was what your final recommendation was.
Correct.
We had talked about other numbers.
Prior to the two and a half.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. So we would but if we were to adopt the fifty point seven, four, which had been discussed before, we'd lose about four tenths of a cent off the O and M. Would that throw our budget in deficit? We wouldn't be structurally balanced.
So I ran about twelve scenarios from the time that well, probably more than that because I was conducting a fire drill this week. But the we ran about twelve scenarios of what would happen at various different O and M rates based off of what was happening at the state level. And off of those twelve scenarios, our problem is not going to be FY twenty six. It's going to be FY twenty seven and beyond. So regardless of what we think is going to happen right now or where you set the tax rate, the lower you set the tax rate from that voter approval rate, the harder next year becomes. And with a two and a half percent voter approval cap and with twenty four firefighters and all of the additional police officers that are in this budget, there is a higher than likely probability that you will have to go out for a tax rate election next year by dropping the rate this year.
But.
So so and and Mayor, to in in terms of the what you asked there on the fifty point seven, four, the budget would be balanced with that for this year?
For this year, but I I'm totally committed personally to thinking about next the next five years and having a glide path. So I think I'm I'm all aligned with staff's traditional view of of thinking about the year two, year three, year four. And I don't want to put us in a position where where we would have to do that. So I totally understand the quander here.
When we look at this, we look at it and and to try and make the best recommendation we can to all of you for what it would take to be a financially sustainable city. And for the changes that we have experienced just since the time that we put the budget proposed out to you until now, it's been significant. And so, like I said, we've we're running as many scenarios as much as we can to try and give you the best advice that we can. But right, right now, our problem isn't FY twenty six. It's what would happen next year.
Okay, and Ms. Yancey has another question.
Thank you very much. But you just indicated, did you not, that this new legislation has a carve out for public safety?
No, that did not. That is not what came out of committee, not at all.
And I just want to be clear too, although it didn't come out. That legislation, one, they ended up pulling back from it from some of them, basically saying that they were concerned that it could actually cause taxes to go up, which they're right because most of what we pay for is public safety. But the way that that exclusion was written would have it would have hurt the whole organization. But it would have also eventually hurt public safety because the way they calculated it, it would have punished us horribly this year for investing in public safety. It would have set a baseline. It is not in the current consideration. It is just a two and a half percent cap over.
There is no carve out for public safety in what got came out at five o'clock today.
Okay, my misunderstanding. A technical question and then a hypothetical on a proposed rate. The technical question is on the voter approval rate of fifty one point one, eight, seven, two. Is that actually that does not trigger the election. Fifty one point one, eight, seven, three would, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's it's one one thousandth of a penny under the voter approval rate, what we're calling the voter approval rate.
No, this is what they call the voter approval rate. This is their definition, not ours, right?
Yes, this is their definition of the voter approval rate.
It means it's just below anyway.
Okay, and and my hypothetical, were I or someone here to move for simplicity's sake in this nightmare of logistics, if we had the opportunity to make our tax rate simple and say fifty one cents, which would be point one, eight, seven, two off of the called tax rate? And it would be it would be it would take your O and M rate to thirty point seven, three, three, two instead of thirty point nine, two, zero, four. In those twelve scenarios that you ran, does it feel to you like like point one, eight, seven, two would throw us out of whack in twenty twenty seven?
With a two and a half percent cap? Yes, sir.
It does.
I'm going to I'm going to answer from my perspective because I feel like it's partly my role here. So we we would manage in any of these scenarios. I think we would be fine next year moving on. I I think at that number, right? That there are certainly challenges with this two and a half percent that we're going to have to see and how that's going to affect the next couple of years. Basically, anything under what we're recommending, you're you are giving up some long term flexibility. But I I think I stated before, based on what we saw, anything above forty nine, seven, four would be manageable. There is going to impact next year and the year after for sure, but we would be able to manage it. So at fifty one cents, I don't see a direct threat in the next couple of years. It you there is a cost, but not not, I think what you're asking, which is, do you become unsustainable in some way?
Well, that's a total of a couple hundred thousand dollars, right?
Right.
I have it on pretty good authority, despite my deep appreciation for my colleagues agreeing to the hundred thousand dollars for public health, that it's not going to happen because it's not going to be reciprocated. So that gets that gets you halfway there.
Right, so so I mean, I hope I'm being clear, even though I'm recommending higher. I if you if it was fifty one or really all the way down to forty nine, seven, four is I think what it was, then I believe we will we will be structurally balanced. You will limit yourself in other ways. So fifty one is not a a killer to you.
Just to Mr. I know I got several other comments, but I'd follow up on this particular discussion. I think one of the really most important things, yes, you give up point one, eight, seven, two cents. But that is a base. You're giving it up on O and M. The data we have is that we're about the lowest O and M rate of any city our size in in the state of Texas. So anything you give up here, you're giving up a base upon which the two and a half percent increase will be calculated in the future.
Couldn't you say that about every single tax rate deliberation that we have from now on?
Oh, absolutely. But but that's my point. We need to think about the longer term of not not reducing your base anymore than you have to at this point because that base is already very low. And and you you want to be able to we're already we're already being fit in the one size fits all world where people with a forty or fifty cent O and M rate have got a bigger base upon which they can generate the two and a half percent.
A final respectful word and then I'll hush. Just because we have to go to the voters doesn't mean they're automatically going to say no. If we make our case, I think we act sometimes like this is some horrific constraint that we might have to go ask the voters.
We don't have time this year.
Well, it isn't a matter of having time or not. We could plan the time and we could still do it, but.
Can we?
But he's talking about the longer term. Our discussion is a little bit about longer term.
Yeah.
Where we might have to go to the voters. I have no problem with that. I just don't see why a city that's already the lowest O and M tax rate in our category of our size should be penalized any more than we have to be penalized by this one size fits all, two and a half percent limit on the increase that you can generate. And and we're giving up, I know it's only two hundred thousand dollars, but it's still part of your base. That's all. That that's what I think is behind the city manager's part of what his argument is. And that that I guess why I lean towards that. But I'm willing to consider whatever council wishes to do. So anyway, I had two other people that wanted to ask a question, Mr. White and then Ms. McLean.
Yes, thank you. This is confusing. This is confusing, okay? In my mind, we're doing it backwards. I think that's kind of a consensus up here. But what what I find interesting is you presented a budget to us in July and you haven't changed that budget, even though we've had some decreases from our appraisal district and now we had the decrease in this. How is there a correlation that we haven't it's not impacting those two things?
If if well, it did impact it. When I presented the budget to you and on July seventh, we did not know about the decrease in the valuations.
Correct.
We recommended at that point in time to decrease the tax rate significantly. We thought we were going to be okay. But then we got the valuation decrease, which that valuation decrease was substantial. And so when we came back and talked to you about calling the tax rate, we said, look, we have a significant valuation decrease that we were unaware of. So we do not think that it is sustainable for the city fiscally for us to be able to to continue to recommend, I think it was a little over two and a half cent, decrease in the tax rate.
Right.
So that is where the city manager said, look, we think we can go to forty nine point seven. I'm recommending that we go to fifty and call this at fifty one point one, eight that we go to 50 and call this at 51.18, because concurrently with that, the state legislature had called a special session, and Senate Bill 10 had gotten passed when the House was, I don't know where they all were, but at any place, when the House left and was not voting on things." So, that Senate Bill 10 is the one that says, "Instead of giving cities a voter approval rate at three and a half percent for the revenue increase, we're gonna lower that to two and a half percent."
Right.
So, that is, that additional decrease was something that when we said, "Hey, look," and the city manager said, "All right, we think it's 49.7 or 50 point something," we were still working through all that. So, yes, this is very confusing.
Councilman, what, what changed is, in the budget is the tax rate. It went from that 49 cents to the 51 cents that we're talking about. That is what the change has been in the budget that allows us to still consider the, the budget of what Mary Ellen presented tonight.
But did you, did you mention that we could still do this budget at 50.74? Is that what you could still, we could still?
Right. So, so, the, the minimum rate to, to basically do the budget as it was presented, given all the changes, was 49.74. And then, what we are recommending is 51.1872. And just to be clear again, all of this is based on revenue, which is a combination of rate and valuation. So, the revenue we needed stayed the same. When the valuation changed, the rate adjusted, but the revenue doesn't.
So, this takes into consideration, 51.18 takes into consideration the 2.5 in Senate Bill 10.
Yeah. So, essentially, what we're saying is, you could, you could fund the budget at a lower rate, but because of constraints in the future and what's going to happen, and, and basically what this is, what makes this, again, whether you want to go out to voters or not in the future is a political question.
Sure.
My recommendation is based on what I see to fund the organization, and the challenges that the cap, it, you know, when I started in this job, was 8% for people who don't know. And what you would have done in the past, and why this is so insidious for cities like us that do have low O and M rates and do all these things, is it punished the ones of us that were doing it the best. And so, what it does is it, 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 once you give up or lose that rate, you never get it back. What you, you used to be able to do is if you said, "Okay, well, we could fund this, and we've got, you know, 8% in the future, and then we needed something else," the council could, could use that 8% of difference to even keep the same tax rate, but lower your debt and raise your O and M, or do things like that. That's what the cap really does to you, is it basically takes away the flexibility, even for people who are running it. It leaves you the option to, to go out to voters to rectify that. But, but that's the reason that we are, from a recommending standpoint, when I look at the O and M costs and things out in the future, that we don't want to give up any of that, because you just, you never get it back, and you don't have any flexibility other than going to the voters.
That, that makes perfect sense. You mentioned, Mary Ellen, that you can't touch the, the, the number for the debt rate.
Correct.
Explain that to me one more time.
Okay. So, there is an amount of principal and interest that is owed on all of the debt that has been issued. And that is the rate that is required to pay just one year's worth of principal and interest.
Could, could we, could we do this budget at 51%? Could we do this budget at 50.74%? As we presented, as we approved it tonight.
So, again, 49.74 is the floor in order to, to handle the budget as it is presented.
Even with the 2.5% in Senate Bill 10?
No, that's next year.
Well, that just, that just funds it for this year. The, the two and a half percent was, would, is going to make that more challenging in the out years, seriously more challenging.
So, the way it works is your voter approval rate is, is two and a half, will be two and a half percent higher next year off of what you set right now. So, it has been three and a half percent off of whatever you set the tax rate. What's out there is it's going to be two and a half percent off of whatever you choose right now.
That, that, that's a really good point. So, basically, next year's tax rate's based off what we're approving tonight.
Correct. That is correct. It is, it is based off of what you are setting tonight.
And we believe it will be seriously constrained next year. That's why the recommendation is not to give up your base, because next year will be even more difficult.
And I, I need to, if you don't mind, I need to put a lot of fuzz and caveats on all of that, because legit, all I've seen is a page and a paragraph. So, I don't know if there's gonna be discussions about how the math on all of this is gonna change, but right now, standing here tonight, under the way the math is calculated, if all they do is lower that three and a half percent to two and a half percent, then what you set tonight, our max is two and a half percent next year.
And just, just for, I mean, anyone listening, and, and a reminder to you guys, because, I mean, I know we've talked about this a lot. What will take in in revenue from property taxes this year will be around 45 million, right? Our total property tax revenue to fund police and fire is 75 million. So, I just want to give people an idea of what, when, when we're talking about the budgetary, that's what we're really looking at.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. McElhaney, you wanted to ask a question, or have we already covered and gone by that?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna say it again my way. We, as leaders, are called to look at not just what's happening this year, but to look at the long-term stability of our community. We have a wonderfully-run city. We've run lean and been able to offer a ton of amenities and services to our citizens. We do that thoughtfully, and we do recognize that those services come with cost. But as a result of being lean, our starting line on any type of tax rate evaluation is way behind any other community of our size. And in order for us to be able to optimally tune our budget, we need to have some breathing room. We do not have it at the rate, at the two and a half percent rate. What's inflation? It's over three, right? So, I mean, what the legislator is imposing is not even enough to keep up with the cost of inflation. The, the next piece of that is, we are bringing on new fire service. We are growing. We do have things that we need to accomplish. We have things we want to accomplish. We've had massive curveballs through this whole process. You came on July 7th, and we were really ecstatic with the budget. And we were really ecstatic with the tax rate, the valuations. We were gonna be able to do a lot with not as much impact to every citizen. The first hit we get is what, like a billion dollars worth of valuation falls off due to some lawsuits that are settled at the county level. Had no idea that was gonna happen. So, that automatically translated into, what was the dollar amount?
I'd have to look it up, but it was significant.
It was a significant number.
It was like two and a half million.
Two and a half million dollars. So, that, that, that's a, that's a decent-sized number. Well, staff pivots, they come. I'm surprised you have a, a dark hair left in your head, and Jeff has any hair left at all. I, I mean, it has been a roller coaster of a week. We get word that this two and a half percent cap is, is coming down, which is already constricting us. And then, it goes to the next legislative body, and they bring it down to one and a half, was it one and a half? 1%?
1%.
And I, I actually thought Chief of Staff was kidding when he called and said that, because the Legislative Affairs Committee has been monitoring this. But the gymnastics that staff has had to go through in order to, we still don't know for sure, right?
No, no, we don't.
So, in the, in the climate of extreme volatility that we're in, and our complete inability to steer our own ship outside of these very narrow constraints, we need to take advantage of whatever foundation we can climb onto and hold on for dear life and see what, what the legislator does next year. So, I fully support the voter, doing it up to the voter approval rate, the 51.1872 cents. I think taking it to 51 is arbitrary and capricious. If we're gonna do it, let's just take it there. I have no problem going before the voters. But quite frankly, we're in a position where we don't have that option, because the Senate and the House can't get their act together and get us the information we need in order to make good fiscal decisions for our community. So, I support 51.1872 cents as our tax rate.
And Mr. Schaefer, you have a question or comment?
Thank you, Councilmember McElhaney.
Okay. Do you have a recommended motion here on the next slide, or shall I just read one?
I do.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You didn't catch that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
One very brief comment. One very, one very brief comment is that the state also stacks the deck against you when you try to put this out for vote. They've passed laws over the past few sessions that make it in capitals at the start of whatever you're doing, this is a tax increase. And at a midterm also, you're gonna get a lot of voters out there who are not engaged, and they're gonna see a tax increase, and they're gonna vote against it, even if it's for a good reason. So, I would like to take the opportunity to control what we have in front of us. And as Mrs. McElhaney put it brilliantly, I agree with her.
Mr. Smith?
A li, a little bit more on, when the, when the legislature sets these caps, and they're, and they're, they're doing it ostensibly for the purpose of lowering the taxes on the public. It doesn't lower the amount of money that the state has to spend. They, they are lowering taxes for someone besides themselves. So, they don't have to pay the price for that restriction on the tax rate increase. We do. The local governments do. That's, that's where that happens. And to set a cap at something lower than the inflation rate, I can see going to the voters and asking for a rate increase, because we're opening a new fire station, and we need to hire 24 new firefighters. But I can't see going to the voters and say, "We need a tax rate increase because inflation was higher than the cap would allow." I, I don't think that's as easy a sell. I think that we need to keep our base as high as we can, so that we have as much as we have to work with.
Two more comments, one from Mr. White, and one from Mr. Yancey, and then I'm gonna ask for a motion. Go ahead. Mr. White?
You ran 12 different scenarios.
More than that. I ran 12 that I documented.
Let's just, let's just assume you ran 12 different scenarios, right? And you basically indicated that 2026 is gonna be okay, but 2027 and beyond is not looking good.
That is, it depends on, it depends on what y'all choose to do and what the state chooses to do. So, that I can't, I can't predict that.
Yeah, no. And, and, and I want to just go on right. Good is relevant, right? I mean, you know, but, but we're able to function in 2026, and 27 and beyond we're not. Did you ran, those scenarios were at 51.1872%, correct?
Not all of them, no.
No, they weren't. So, if, were they, the ones that you ran with that tax rate, how bad was 27 and beyond?
I can't answer that, because I don't know what the state is doing. So...
Assuming two, assuming 2.5%?
Here, here's what I would say. I mean, we're...
You see what I'm saying?
No.
Yeah. It, what I would say is, from a, from a very simplistic standpoint, the lower the rate is, the more challenging it's gonna be in the future. And, and really, what you're doing here, because of assuming there's a two and a half percent cap, or if they don't pass it, there is still a three and a half percent cap, this is just widening your runway for a few years until it will eventually catch you.
Well, my, well, my point was this. This is my point I was trying to get to, and just to, just to get confirmation from you. Doing it at the 51.1872% is still gonna put us in challenging times in 27 and beyond.
Yeah, but we can't...
Right? That's what I was getting at. If we reduce it, we're even gonna be more issues. But if we stay with it, we're still gonna have challenges ahead.
Yeah, I think, exactly right. I think the, I think, and we maybe talked about this last time, so maybe it's helpful. The way to, to me, the way to think about it is, if you need 49.74 to fund this year, and then you add a penny, and we talked about what that is, then when you look at those out years and the challenges you have in those out years, that's the, the delta that you have to help you, is the, is the extra revenue that you're getting from this in this year. But eventually, and again, depending on what happens, because good things could happen too. We may, we're talking about the legislature right now, and I don't foresee that necessarily being helpful, but other good things can happen, new valuation that comes on, other stuff that may make it good. And in the future, if things go better, then, you know, you have the same decisions to make.
Okay. Well, you clarified it at the end. Last comment from Mr. Yancey, and then I'm gonna call for a motion.
Mayor, I want to commend staff. They are having to make decisions for the organization based on conditions on the ground, and those conditions continue to change. But they're not the policymakers. We are. And what concerns me about this whole line of discussion, and my vote will be a respectful protest vote, is that if I, as a policymaker, am given the choice between never lowering taxes again, the tax rate ever, because of this two and a half percent cap, for fear of having to ask the citizens, or setting it for what we need this year, and working with the citizens as we go, and preserving the ability from time to time to cut the tax rate, I'm choosing the latter every single time. We do not need that revenue this year. Thusly, we don't have to go out to vote this year, and we have plenty of time to put it before them next year and the years after that. So, I refuse to be painted into a corner with a de facto policy that says, "You can never lower taxes again because of the two and a half percent rate." And that's where I'm at.
I, I don't know that that's entirely true about the future. We are lowering the taxes even at the voter approval rate of 51.1872. That is lowering the tax rate a smidgen, a small amount, I agree. But it is still lowering the tax rate. And if you look at our, at our, at the line that was presented maybe a week or two ago, you know, we've got kind of a slow decline in the tax rate over the last several years. This continues that. If we don't, if we, if we adopt something less than this, we're going to have to raise the taxes in the future. And I, I just don't think that's a good policy decision. I think this preserves us the opportunity to keep the tax rate where it is and maybe lower it again next year.
That's compelling.
I think, I think that, that, to me, is the policy decision here. So, anyway, I, I did say that I would ask for, we, we said we were gonna try to finish this meeting at nine, but there's been a good discussion, very useful, and particularly for people that haven't had to go through.
I think we said eight. I think we said eight, actually, but, you know.
Most of us laughed at that.
That was, that was two hours ago. Anyway...
If you put the motion up, I'll make it.
I would be happy to, Scott.
Mr. Schaefer can make it.
Are we ready to go?
Yep.
All right.
I make the following motions on the ordinance as it appears on the dais. I move that the property tax rate be decreased by the adoption of a tax rate of 51.1872 cents per 100 assessed valuation, which is effectively a .24% decrease in the tax rate. I also move the maintenance and operations rate be 30.9204 cents per 100 assessed valuation, and the debt service rate be 20.2668 cents per 100 percent, per $100 assessed valuation.
Second.
And a second from Ms. McElhaney, motion made by Mr. Schaefer. Okay. So, we have motion on the floor. Do you wish to speak to your motion, or have we had enough speaking?
I do not. I am ready to vote.
Okay. Ms. McElhaney, you too? Okay. Do you want a vote of record this time, too?
Yes, please.
Okay. We're gonna start again with place one, since that's easy to do.
Aye.
Aye.
Respectfully, nay.
Aye.
Vote is six to one, and you have Mr. Yancey voting nay. So, we are now, we have adopted a tax rate. We sure hope that the legislature on Monday doesn't mess this all up. If they do...
I'll be back again telling you my crystal ball has changed.
And then, and then we may have to deal with the budget and cut the budget somewhere, but we'll see.
Just to be clear to everyone, nothing that the legislature can do right now would change anything that we have done.
That's right, that's right.
So, if the legislature sees fit to, to let the two and a half percent go, then you guys can come back and have a discussion if you want to do something different.
Don't challenge them.
Okay. We have now item 9. Okay, we have now item nine point four, which again, Ms. Leonard is, Ms. Leonard's gonna go home after this one and take the day off tomorrow.
Thank you.
I'm not your boss, so I can't actually say that, but you've earned it, okay.
Yeah, so am I supposed to say no now? Like, that, doesn't seem like that would work.
Well, no, she, I think Mr. Kirsten is her supervisor, so I don't think you need to worry about it. Nine point four, presentation discussion, possible action on a resolution adopting fees, rates, and charges as provided by Chapter Two Administration, Article Five Finance, Division Two, fees, rates, and charges of the Code of Ordinances, City College Station, Texas.
So, part of the revenue that's included in the budget has to do with the fees. Back in June, so before I even presented you the budget, we sent you the fee ordinance, which is rather long, has a lot of sections, and a lot of things that are considered in it. Sorry, I don't know why this one is a little backwards. One of the things that council had asked for was a discussion about the delinquency fees. The delinquency fees are charged in the utilities, and they're for disconnections and reconnections. There are fifty-five hundred accounts that have been charged that over the last six months, totaling about a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Fifty-six percent of that is multifamily, and fifteen percent of that is commercial. Forty-one percent of those have multiple charges, and that section that is in the fee ordinance has its section forty dot or dash thirteen B, and it is a twenty-five-dollar delinquent fee for residents, a hundred and fifty-four-dollar fifty cent delinquent fee for commercial accounts, and a, an additional thirty dollars and ninety cent charge if we are called back in to be between five PM and nine PM to handle a reconnection. The other things that are in the fee resolution...
Can I ask a question on that one?
You bet.
It's late enough, if I don't go linearly, I'll get lost. So, if I'm not mistaken, there's a twenty-five-dollar fee when it's cut off, and another twenty-five-dollar fee to re...
No, it's a twenty-five-dollar fee to reconnect.
To reconnect.
It's not when it's, when it's cut off. It's twenty-five-dollar to reconnect.
On the residential side, do you know, you said forty-one percent of these accounts have multiple charges, do you know, like, what percentage of the, is it that twenty-nine percent?
It's forty-one percent of the five thousand five hundred and forty-five accounts, so if you'll, hold on a second, we'll do some math on the fly here.
Twenty-nine percent of that is the...
So, that's about twenty-nine, so about, five, five, four. So, it's about sixteen hundred and eight accounts, and assuming that forty-one percent is ratably over all of that, it's about six hundred and fifty-nine accounts.
Okay, thank you.
Roughly.
And please proceed.
Okay, so the other items that are in the fee resolution is that there is no rate increase for water, wastewater, or electric this year, however, there is a slight decrease in the transmission delivery adjustment, as well as in the solar charge credit change that's reflected in the electric, on the electric side. There is an increase of three percent for all of the fees that we have tied to the Consumer Price Index, all urban consumer. That includes the planning fees, the drainage fees, and the roadway maintenance fees. There is a change in the CPI index for solid waste that used to be tied to the CPIU, and we are now tying it to the CPI for water, sewer, and trash, which has gone up five percent, not three percent. And then there are some certain specific waste, solid waste fees that are proposed to increase, an additional five percent based off of a presentation that was delivered to council in a separate workshop. Tourism has revised the deposits for the use of the twelve oh seven event space, and Parks has revised the summer camp fee from per session to per week.
What is the deposit on twenty, twelve oh seven? How much does it cost to rent that location?
It's a fifty-two paid ordinance, I have to look it up.
It's on page eight of fifty-four, and it is one thousand dollars. There you go.
So, one thousand dollars, it was at two thousand dollars, is I correct?
The thousand is, the thousand is the deposit. The rental fees vary depending on...
So, it's two thousand dollars to rent it for four hours, three thousand for eight hours, and what we had done with the deposit is require a fifty percent deposit, depending on the time in which you rented it, either a four hour or eight hour. What we're doing with this change is just making one single deposit fee regardless of the hours that you rented for.
Do you have different rates, like, for nonprofits?
We don't currently, however, we do have the ability to reduce the rate depending on what the event is.
Are we filling it up to your satisfaction, Michael?
Yeah, I think we've provided a good balance in terms of, you know, not only renting, you know, for private events, but, but also using it for community-wide events that help drive other tourism or economic development-related efforts.
But is the docket full, is my question, on that facility?
Is it full every day or full every weekend? No, but it's full based off of the balance in terms of the staffing that we have with it. But in general, we have seen a significant increase in the terms of the use of the facility over the past year. Thank you.
And just for this council, and, I mean, again, direction in the future or something, but where we kinda started out was an idea that we would look at it in thirds, a third of people who are renting it for whatever they wanna rent it for, and they're paying it for it like a space, a competitive space, a third for things that we might do or directly related to partnerships that we have, things we put on over there, and the third that tend to be things like nonprofits and community groups that may see a reduced rate, and, but are doing things that benefit the community. And we have a pretty good mix of that, where we, we see all three of those, and we all kinda use our judgment on where they fall in those, because everybody tends to wanna discount, but we have, we have pretty good success with folks, and, and so the other thing we've tried to do is make sure we're not undercutting other people on the pricing for just standard event places, so.
Is this the juncture where we can ask about other fees?
Yeah, go ahead. Well, yeah. Are you done with this slide?
Yes, sir.
And do you have another slide?
The only other slide is the motion slide.
Okay, well, let's, let's ask the question, because you really referred back to the full fee schedule that, that was raised, or circulated back in June, I guess. And Ms. McElhaney has a question.
So, one's just a point of curiosity, what is the livestock permit fee for the police department?
There's some fees from animal control, part of our animal control ordinance based off of chickens, different things like that, you get a permit fee to have those in, in the city.
I never knew that, thank you. Permit your chickens, okay. I had the twelve oh seven space flagged for discussion as well. That, it seems like it's a much higher rate than our other facilities. I know we kinda probably look at it as a higher-value event space, but the rates just seem high compared to the rest of the city-owned property, is there?
Yeah, and that was intentional because it is really, I mean, for a few reasons. One, because we also use it, but also because it is really seen as an event space that people, I mean, you can kinda come in there with no relation to any municipal anything versus some of the other spaces are really more park and kinda public use type.
Okay.
So, that, that was the idea, and also why we have the ability to lower the fee or waive it for events that, that kinda fit into more of the civic or, you know, partnership policy.
I had a question about the false alarms for the police department. Are we collecting and enforcing that?
We are, we have a company that helps with that, we, a third party that also helps with that, collecting those fees.
Just personal experience, our office building, I don't know what was going on, I actually was on the call list, even though I probably should not have been, but it, it just, like, a string of, like, ten of them over the course of six months, and I, I feel like if they were being charged, they would've been more cognizant of training or what have you, so...
Well, they, they work with companies, sometimes, especially like when we had electrical storms, and stuff like that, there goes off a lot. Sometimes those are bypassed or skipped in that, but if, I assume somebody in your company was probably receiving some bills for anything over three, I think it's three or five, so.
Why are your rents so high?
I just appreciate councilmembers coming up here and acknowledging they need to be fined for, like...
It's not my building, I didn't show on the call list.
Alarms and trash cans.
Our building, not our business.
I, I would like, and I don't know how the proper way to do this, I'm sure y'all will all tell me, I would like to eliminate the residential disconnect, or reconnect fee off the utility fee list here. I think that was it. That was it. My Kit Kat wrapper fell out of my notebook.
Other questions? If, you wanna continue, maybe? Ms. Leonard, I think you said the next thing was the call for discussion and questions, right?
Correct.
So, we're okay. Other questions for Ms. Leonard on this? Mr. Yancey, no?
Just, just one, so if I take sales tax receipts, and I take property tax receipts, and then I look at everything else, is, other than those two things, is, does that constitute fees? All of them?
No, because we have the, the main pieces of our revenue are sales tax and property tax. The third main piece of our revenue would be the utility transfer. That's not a fee. And then, the additional pieces, like, the grant is included, grant money is included in the revenue, interest income is included in revenue, so I, I think that might be too broad of a statement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no other questions? Yes, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith?
I heard Councilperson McElhaney talk about wanting to eliminate something. Do we need to talk about that and possibly amend the ordinance before we take a vote on it?
Yes, yeah, you would, you would just, when you make the emotion, you make a motion to amend it, to, if it was residential, and I was gonna ask you to clarify it, I mean, 'cause there's residential, multifamily, and commercial, you're only doing residential.
Only residential.
And so, you just talk about it, and if you make a motion to amend it, then when you adopt the whole thing, we would adopt it as amended.
You'd just say, "As amended, section forty dash thirteen B, I, for residential, to reduce the fee to zero."
I think that's what she said. Is that what you said?
That's exactly what I said. I move that we approve...
Second motion.
I move for adoption of the FY twenty, FY twenty-eight fee resolution as presented, oh, the, the, the fee resolution with the following amendment, eliminate...
Section forty dash thirteen B, what I...
Disconnection and reconnections.
...fee for twenty-five dollars for residential. Remove it to zero.
Set it to zero for residential only.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion, a second. I have a question, and a question for the, the individual making the motion. Are the individuals that we're most concerned about really living in single-family detached, or are a lot of them in multifamily? And I, I, I take your motion as being engendered by a real concern for low-income households.
It is, and I, I think there's probably some more research to be done on multifamily, was where I was coming from. Many of our multifamily facilities, if I understand correctly, they are, they may be metered, especially the lower incomes, they're metered on one meter.
Right, that's why the rate is higher, is because the, the older complexes are metered on, a meter per building, so that's why it's a hundred and, yeah.
So, their problem is between them and the property owner, and that, we can't interfere with it. I understand, now, you got, you've answered my question.
There may be a larger question to explore there, but it's not within the confines of the data we have tonight, and I would assume, and it is an assumption, that, you know, if you have a single-family residence that's having their power cut, there's, there's probably something going on that, that...
Yeah. Did you get the motion, Ms. Smith? Okay, is it, is that a motion that you understand?
I understand.
And it was seconded. Any further, you wanna speak to your motion further or not?
I think I've done it already.
Okay. You have a question, Mr. Wright?
So, obviously...
Comment, really?
Yes, so obviously, their, their electricity would get cut off whoever fails to pay, and then they would still just need to pay their remaining balance to get it turned back on, I suppose, that's the...
Yes, they pay, they have to pay the past due portion, not everything that is outstanding, and a twenty-five-dollar reconnection fee, right now.
Right now, and so we would, there's no late fee either.
Yeah, there are, I was gonna say, there are still late fees.
There's still, okay, 'cause I, in spirit, I agree, but also in practice, I don't want us to end up having folks take it, who are very capable of paying these things, take advantage of what we're trying to do. Your heart's in the right place.
The, the late fees, one, is a much bigger number, so it would be a significant revenue impact. If you don't pay it, you still pay the late fees, but you don't pay a reconnect fee.
Yeah.
They're also, the late fees are also a smaller number on the individual, they're just more of them collected throughout the years.
Correct.
More broad collection, and that would be, I mean, a significant difference between this. We would have to have a long conversation about that.
But staff-wise things, we can swing without...
This is totally fine.
Okay, then, I, I appreciate, I think your heart's in the right place, I just wanna make sure the city itself does not end up getting inadvertently taken advantage of, which I think there are bad actors everywhere, always.
The, the late fees, I mean, a, a big one, maybe five dollars, I mean, it's, they're not...
Yeah, a lot, it, it's pages and pages of, of small amounts. The late fee is one, when you are twenty-one days past the billing date, so when we bill you, you are then, haven't paid your bill for essentially three weeks. There is a late fee that goes on. There are a number of people who use that notification because we send, send notifications out. They use that as, "Oh, I need to pay my bill," and so they get a small amount of a late fee on their bill, so...
Okay, now, so you've combined your recommendation as an amendment as, as a change, but within the larger fee ordinance. Everybody understand that? Okay, we've got a, a motion and a second. Oh, by the way, the motion is made by McElhaney, seconded by Mr. Yancey, so we have that on the floor. No further discussion, all those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I'm done.
You're done?
I'm done.
Till Monday, no, till Tuesday. Till tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, I'll leave that to your boss. Okay, we've got two more items on the regular agenda, both of which are, are ordinances vacating, number nine point five, public hearing, presentation, discussion, possible action regarding an ordinance vacating and abandoning a zero-point-one-one-four acre portion of a seven-point-foot, five-foot wide utility easement located along the rear lot lines of lots one through five and lots fifteen through twenty, block two, Tauber Edition subdivision, College Station, Texas, according to the final plat recorded in volume one thirty-three, page one eighty-two of the deed records of Brazos County, Texas. And Mr. Harper, I see you've got both of these items, they both are in the same area, do you want me to open the other one as well, or, or wait? They're both, they're, they're, they're public hearings, I'll, I'll handle them separately unless you tell me otherwise.
They, they are both, they're separate sites, and it's the same applicant, separate sites, separate projects.
Okay, proceed.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Lucas Harper, Planning and Development Services. Tonight's agenda item nine point five is the requested abandonment of a point-one-one-four acre portion of a utility easement located along the rear of lots one through five and fifteen through twenty of block two of the Tauber Edition, more commonly known as the four-hundred block of Stasney in the North Gate District. The requested portion of the utility easement bisects the four-hundred block from the south to the north, running from Cross Street to Lot fifteen, and is located at the rear of the lots. The easement's seven-point-five feet wide on each lot for a total of fifteen feet in width, and previously housed electric and telecom. Blanket construction easement has been obtained for lots one through five and fifteen through twenty for the relocation of the utilities to Stasney Street, and new conduit has been installed for both utilities. The request for abandonment was initiated by the applicant due to their desire to construct a mid-rise apartment building in the current easement location. All utilities have provided consent for the abandonment, and I have had one general inquiry regarding the nature of abandonments in general. Staff recommends approval, and that, that's all I have.
Thank you, any questions? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, so... Seeing none, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishes to speak to the council? I didn't have anybody sign up for this, so seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing and move to the will of council.
Move approval as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Schaefer, seconded by somebody down here, Mr. Wright. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That was nine point five. Nine point six, public hearing, presentation, discussion, possible action regarding the ordinance and ordinance vacating and abandoning a zero point zero seven seven acre portion of a seven-foot wide utility easement located along the rear lot lines of lot, lots four through nine, block one of the Tauber Addition Subdivision, College Station, Texas, according to final plat recorded in volume one thirty-three, page one eighty-two of the deed records of Brazos County, Texas. Mr. Harper?
Tonight's agenda item nine point six is the requested abandonment of a point zero seven seven acre portion of a utility easement located along the rear of lots four through nine of block one of the Tauber Addition, more commonly known as the three hundred block of Stasney in the North Gate District. The requested portion of the utility easement bisects three hundred block from north to south, running from Cross Street to lots four and nine, located at the rear of the lots. The easement's seven and a half feet wide on each lot for a total of fifteen feet in width and previously housed electric and telecom. Blanket utility easement has been obtained for lots four through nine for the relocation of the utilities to Stasney Street and new conduit has been installed for both utilities. The request for abandonment was initiated by the applicant due to their desire to construct a high-rise apartment building in the current easement location. All utilities have provided consent for the abandonment and I've had one general inquiry from the neighboring owner regarding the nature of the abandonment. The neighbor ultimately signed the abandonment application. Staff recommends approval and that concludes my presentation.
Okay, I didn't have anybody sign up for this, but I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak to the council on this abandonment. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, but I do have a question, just to comment. Are these, both these last two buildings, they're already partway through demolition, is that right?
That is correct, they've obtained demolition permits and.
It's, I looked at me driving through there, not recent, recently, that they were in the process of stripping valuable materials out, maybe copper or something and, and getting ready to tear, tear them down.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Mr. Smith moves approval, Mr. Yancey seconds that. Oh, I did close the public hearing, I do remember doing that. So no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much, Mr. Harper.
Thank you.
And the applicants, if they're here, I assume you are. Appreciate you moving forward with, with the project and we can help get out of your way.
Appreciate y'all bearing with us and saving us and making it through the night.
Well, I appreciate you guys staying with us for a very long time, but that's just the way we work. Abandonments always come at the end because they're usually pretty straightforward.
Is there any reason why we put them at the end when we can plow through those really quickly and get these nice folks out?
Just think of what these guys learned tonight.
You're welcome, every other Thursday night.
I'll defer that to staff to consider for future, future agendas.
So just a quick explanation, one of the reasons we do that is because while I hate that you guys had to wait, if something happened, and I know this never does, but council talked for a long time about something we had not predicted, then you'd have a bunch of people sitting here waiting to hear about the tax rate and that would probably be a more challenging thing. So that, that's kind of how we think of it.
Very good, thank you. Okay, in our effort to finish now before ten o'clock, items of community interest and council calendar, you see the council calendar in front of you. I just wanted to note and note of condolences for the family of Lou Hodges, longtime member of the Historic Preservation Committee, Parks Board, good friend of the city, a good citizen, contribute a lot to the city historically. He passed away about a week ago and, yeah, very suddenly. Well, I think he had fallen and had difficulty recovering from a, from a hip issue or something. Anyway, it was a shock to me and somebody I know and value and, and he's, I just wanted to make note of that and extend the city's condolences to his family and know that he will be remembered for what he has contributed to city processes over the many years he's been involved. The calendar is in front of you. Something I didn't note last time and I should have was the, Mr. Yancey's IGC meeting was on there the last time and I didn't advertise it and frankly, I wasn't able to get to that particular session, but sounded like there was a pretty well, well-received report from particularly the drone folks at the police and the overview of the fire, new fire station, so I noticed that Chief Man got a lot of mileage out of that meeting.
College Station Fire and Police really knocked it out of the park. It was very entertaining and informative.
And you'll have another one of those later in September, we'll have it on the next, next list. Anybody else see anything there that needs to be highlighted? We come back here at September eleventh, our council meeting, and I assume somewhere in here we have a workshop, September eleventh. We got four items, electric services, water services, website updates, and Greater Brazos Partnership Annual Compliance Report are on the September eleventh at least currently, subject to some evolution, I guess, we'll see what else, but that's good. Oh, I didn't, I did fail to mention, it's in your packet, there was a written here visitor statement by Margaret and James Palensar and it's somewhere in your, in your packet, so if you have not read that, you should take a look at it. All right, moving on from item ten to item eleven, which is reports on committee boards and commissions. I think Mr. Wright, you. I'll go with Mr. Wright first.
The Transportation Committee met last week.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
And basically, we're, we're looking at traffic calming policies will be coming forward, it was a good meeting.
Does that include Victoria?
This is the policies, not any specific location.
Ah.
Policy with regard to how a neighborhood can.
Yes.
Put forward their request.
I only ask because my in-laws, for the second time in two months, had a car crash through their back fence off Victoria.
Anyway.
Just very brief report from the Legislative Engagement Committee, we, you know, we, with Chief of Staff Ross, we've been working, following these things that have been filed and we reached out to our representatives in opposition, SB ten, and how it can hinder our ability to do business as elected officials in the City of College Station.
Thank you. Any further reports?
IGC asked and answered previously, Your Honor.
Thank you. And Mr. Schaefer, did you raise your hand? Okay. Ms. McLean, a committee?
I attended the Tourism Committee meeting yesterday and I know we'll be getting a report from them, but the PR firm, not the PR, the Advertising Zimmerman was very, very, very impressed with the items they brought forward. I can't wait for Jeremiah to present that, is that next month, maybe, October, November? Whenever it's coming, but there's really neat ad campaigns.
You mean the minutes from that meeting or some workshop presentation?
There'll be a workshop coming, I think, but I just think, I was really impressed and I don't say that lightly with the, the ad campaign, it was pretty cool.
Thank you. Item twelve, future agenda items. I did mention the four that are on the list for next meeting, September eleventh. Mr. White?
At our last meeting, we talked about Pebble Creek Parkway and I thought the decision was made to put it on the September twenty-fifth workshop agenda. Okay, can this just be, so is that just a, it's.
Yeah, it's on there.
Excuse me? It's right here.
It, it's on there. It doesn't, it doesn't show on here, but it's on there as an item.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I have is not, is really a request for a report. The subject came up and I think we're all interested in twelve oh seven, when we complete a year. It'd be interesting just to have a one-page summary of, you know, how many weeks and what the costs were and the revenue and that sort of thing. I assume we've got a, a separate line item for twelve oh seven, right?
We've got to, we track it, we can send the spreadsheet to council.
That'd be, that'd be of interest to me at least if you would do that. Doesn't need to be a workshop item, just something that I hope we could, could all learn something from. Okay, well, if there's no future agenda items beyond that, we are adjourned.